In the corners, we're good? How about we over there? Can you hear me? Great. Okay. I know it's difficult, particularly with a mask and being so far away. If you're anything like me, it's really hard to understand people sometimes when you aren't looking at their mouths. I never realized until all of this how much reading of lips I did, and I'm sure that there are a lot of people that are in the same position. So, we want to get started this evening. I recognize that there are people still waiting outside to come in, and they can come in certainly and join us, but because of the fact that it's 10 after 7, just about, we want to start now and get going. So, as everybody here is aware, there's been a giving the rules kind of of town meeting and telling us what to expect this evening. So, I'm just going to go over those once again in case people are coming in now, in case you weren't necessarily listening to it. So, I just want to go over everything again now. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Easton's annual town meeting. As you're seated and waiting for the meeting to begin, I thought I would go over some rules. My name is Kate Welch, I'm your town moderator. Okay? Up here on stage with me, to my right, to your left, is the town clerk Danielle Sicard. And to my left and your right is town council Kate Federoff. And on the floor up here, to my right and your left, down at the long table, is the select board and the town administrator. And on the other side, to my left and your right, is the finance committee. Okay? So, they're going to be answering questions, doing presentations this evening. Behind kind of the screen here and behind the stage, there are department heads that are seated back behind that will answer questions as well. So, as everybody knows, we need a quorum normally of 100 people, but last week, the town, the select board voted to reduce that quorum down after legislation, and the quorum is now 50 just for this meeting. We are way over 50, we're way over 100. At last count, we were about 280. So, that's why we're going to get started. So, also in this room, as you've all noticed, everybody is at least six feet apart. There are sections for non-registered voters over on my left and the far, far left to your right. And there's also other sections for people who elected not to wear masks over in that section there. If it becomes really crowded in here, if more people come than we anticipated, we'll certainly take up the sections that are empty and on both sides, and we'll add more chairs if necessary. Okay? So, hopefully, we won't have to worry about that. We chose this building because of the fact that it's a nice, big building, high ceilings, good ventilation, and we did a lot of research and study before we chose the building. Okay? So, as everybody's aware, our town meeting is governed by town meeting time, as well as our bylaws and our town charter. There's a glossary of terms provided in the back of your warrant that each of you should have in your hands if you need to review these terms. Hopefully, everybody has watched the video like I indicated, but I just want to go over some rules for you. So, if you would like to speak during the presentations or after the presentations on each article, there are three microphones set up throughout the audience, as you can see if you look around, three microphones, one kind of directly in front of me, one over the left, one over to the right. Each microphone has a high-top table next to it. The high-top table has wipes and hand sanitizer. So, when you go up to speak, after you speak at the microphone, I'm going to ask that you use the wipes to wipe the microphone down, and the hand sanitizer is there for you. There are lines on the floor to keep distance, six feet apart, when you're waiting in line. Okay? I'm going to ask, before you go up, to speak on any given article that you gather your thoughts, because each person is only going to be allowed to speak one time on any given article, one time on any given article. I will not allow cross-examination of any kind. So, you need to speak on the article, on the point, and move on. There's no cross-examination, as I indicated. So, again, ladies and gentlemen, we thank you this evening for coming out under these unusual circumstances. Tonight, we don't have many articles on the warrant. We only have about 10 articles on the warrant, so we're hoping that we can go relatively quickly. And again, if you have any questions, comments, or concerns, you need to approach that microphone, and when you do that, make sure that you address us up here by telling us your name and your address, and it's important to do that each and every time you approach the microphone, because we're recording it. Not only is ECAT recording the town meeting, but also our town clerk is up here taking minutes, and she needs to know who is posing questions and where you, what your address is. Okay? If you have an amendment on any given article, the amendment needs to be in writing. So, either you can write it on your warrant if you have an amendment, we have paper up here and pens if the need be. Okay? So... Oops. Last thing I'll talk about is voting, so everybody should have a card that you got when you came in. Every registered voter should have an orange card that you got when you came in. When it comes time for a vote, I'm going to ask if you are for a certain article passing, I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand with your card in your hand and hold it up there, and I'll tell you what the vote needs to be, if it's majority or two-thirds. We'll take a count, and then I'll have you put it down. And then, if you're against an article passing, I'll have you do the same thing, raise your hand with your card in your hand so that we can take a count. If it becomes necessary to do a standing count, I'm just going to ask for you to be patient. You might have to hold that card up there for a while or stand up while we send counters around the room. Hopefully, that won't become an issue, but just in case it does, just be patient. Okay? So, all speakers, once again, are going to be treated with courtesy by the moderator and everybody else in the room. Okay? I expect it to be a productive discussion, and again, no cross-examination, no inciting of any type. Okay? So, with that all being said, I think that we are ready. The warrant has been returned. I'm going to ask everybody to stand if you'd like and pledge allegiance. The flag is right behind you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So, today is June 22, 2020, and it is now about 7:15 PM, and the annual town meeting for the town of Easton is called to order. Article, Article 1, Select Board Member Folgenetti.
I move that the town vote to amend Chapter Subsection 26-6, Departmental Revolving Funds, Section E, Authorized Revolving Fund of the Chapter 26, Financial Affairs Bylaw of the Town of Easton, General Bylaws, by adding an additional revolving fund known as the Fire/EMS Vehicle and Equipment Revolving Fund, and to authorize the total expenditure limits for the revolving funds as printed in your warrant under Article 1 pursuant to General Law Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, to be expended in accordance with the bylaws heretofore approved. Explanation: The article amends the bylaw to add an additional revolving fund for the Fire and Rescue Department and sets annual spending limits for all revolving funds established pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2. Actual expenditures cannot exceed the balance in the fund even if the expenditures are less than the established limits. The Selectman recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Okay. Any comments, questions, or concerns relative to Article 1? Okay, seeing none. All of those in favor of Article 1 passing, please raise your orange card in your right hand. This is a simple majority vote. And all of those opposed, please raise your right hand. And Article 1 passes by majority. Article 2.
I move that the town vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town pursuant to Section 108 of Chapter 41 of the General Laws as printed in the warrant. By way of explanation, this is an annual article required by statute to set the salary levels for all compensated elected officials. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Any comments, questions, or concerns relative to Article 2? Seeing none. All of those in favor of Article 2 passing, please raise your hand, your right hand. This again is a simple majority vote. And all of those opposed to Article 2 passing, please raise your right hand. And Article 2 passes by majority. Article 3, Select Board Member Barja.
They didn't bring any wipes on. Good evening, everybody. Motion is to, I move to dismiss Article 3. The state budget is not finalized, and the amount of Easton's FY '21 apportionment is unknown at this time. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee. All those in favor of dismissing Article 3, please raise your right hand. And all those opposed, please raise your right hand. Okay, Article 3 is dismissed.
Article 4.
Article 4.
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, or appropriate by transfer from available funds, a sum of money to supplement fiscal year 2020 budget or take any other action relative thereto. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $61,885 to supplement the following fiscal year 2020 budgets as follows. Town clerk, $8,800. Other general government, $3,085. Solid waste and recycling, $50,000, for a total of $61,885. And to meet, and that, to meet this appropriation, $11,885 shall be transferred from the fiscal year 2020 reserve fund, and the $50,000 shall be transferred from solid waste and recycling By way of explanation, this article supplements the fiscal 2020 budget for costs related to unanticipated special elections, increases in the Bristol County Agricultural High School Assessment, and increases in recycling costs. The funding sources are available enterprise funds for solid waste and a portion of the finance committee's budgeted reserve fund, which is discreet from the town's general reserves composed of stabilization and free cash. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article number 4? Okay, seeing none. All of those in favor of Article number 4 passing, please raise your right hand with the card in your hand. And all of those opposed, please raise your right hand with your card in your hand. And Article 4 passes by a majority. Article 5, Select Board Member Bissar.
I can't get this out of here.
It's all right.
Get it out after you go.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that.
Good evening. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $54,500 for the purchase of a police cruiser, and that to meet this appropriation, $23,000 shall be transferred from surplus funds voted pursuant to Article 4 of the November 12, 2019 special town meeting, and $31,500 shall be transferred from surplus funds voted pursuant to Article 4 of the October 30, 2018 special town meeting. By way of explanation, at the special town meeting in November of 2019, funding in the amount of $132,300 was approved for the purchase of three Dodge Charger police cruisers. However, the police department was later notified after town meeting that those vehicles would not be available until the fall of 2020. As a result, the department purchased different models, but the appropriation was only sufficient to purchase two vehicles rather than three. This article will transfer the balance of remaining in the original cruiser appropriation of $23,000 plus the surplus funds in another appropriation for the purchase of cruisers to make up the difference. Select Board recommend.
Finance Committee.
The vote to recommend did not pass. There were four yes and four no votes on the finance committee.
Okay. Any comments, questions, or concerns relative to Article number 5? I see one so far. Okay, if you want to, you can get up and stand in the line, or you can go to a different
Hi, Ben Hampton, 1A Pine Lane. Can I ask the finance committee why they split their vote, or what were the thoughts behind their vote ended up being split?
I think it's more of a, it's a discussion, it's probably a slightly different answer for everyone. I'm happy to open it up to a discussion that we could comment on. I think it was, from a personal standpoint, I think it was a matter of, is there a possibility for some fiscal savings to delay this until a later time for some people? But I don't want to speak for everybody either. I'm happy to open it up to others to discuss. In my own case, I voted yes. I think this was passed twice. The appropriation made sense. The discussion of it as a symbolic vote did not sit right with me in the context of doing something that was fiscally responsible for the town. That was my own, my own experience on it.
All right, thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak to this or comment on their own vote?
Michael Goodman, 159 Bay Road. Madam Moderator, could we poll the board as to who voted yes and who voted no, please?
I'm not going to poll the board at this point. They're willing to speak at this point.
I just want to know who voted which way.
You can ask them. Hello?
Finance Board, could I respectfully ask which members voted yes for the appropriation and which voted no, please?
All those who voted yes, please stand. Roberta's not standing for the record. She's trying to run. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Yes. Roberta, I think you had something you wanted to, here, I'll bring this back to you.
Just a reminder that the wipes are there to wipe down the microphone between each speaker, just a reminder. Okay?
Mr. Hampton asked earlier what some of the rationale was for not recommending the vote for the cruiser. In my estimation, I felt as though a certain dollar amount had been approved and allocated for three vehicles. Two vehicles were purchased, and they were more expensive than anticipated. I would like a new car this year, but I don't have the extra money to buy the third car. And I felt as though, on principle, that this was not the year, given the economic crises that we're in in the town, that it was time to buy the third cruiser. End story. It has no other symbolism for me other than, did we have the money? What was allocated and what was spent? So, that was my answer, Mr. Hampton.
Jennifer Stacy, and I pretty much have a similar reasoning to Roberta. I felt that, given the current financial situation for the town, that we should consider waiting till fall town meeting, and questions were asked that were discussed around the possibility of that, so that is where my vote fell. Again, it was not a symbolic vote, it wasn't punitive, I'll leave it at that.
Jamie Stebbins. So, I voted for the additional cruiser, and a big part of this is cost avoidance for us as a community, knowing that we have vehicles that are being run 24/7, and unlike our vehicles that'll get an oil change every six months or 5,000 miles, these vehicles are being run often idle, and maintenance costs creep up very quickly, gets very, very expensive. So, to hold off, especially, I think it was almost fortunate that they made the decision when they did, as we see the disruption in supply chain now. So, it'd be even more difficult to get those vehicles that were potentially going to be available in September of 2020 or in the fall of 2020, to now see those pushed out six, eight more months. At that point, now we've probably incurred maintenance costs that well exceed this additional money needed to buy that third vehicle. So, I think it was, again, very fortunate for us as taxpayers to be in the situation we're in and to avoid the costs that might be associated with running a vehicle into the ground, or God forbid, a first responder not making it to a life or death call because they're in a vehicle that breaks down that was ill-equipped to still be on the road.
Jeremy Tumilio, and I would just like to echo, I'm not in there, I would just like to echo everything that Stacy and Roberta said, plus also, I asked questions directed to Chief Sullivan, hoping that he would be in attendance or be able to be in attendance for the meeting we had today, and I was told that that would not be possible, so I was not comfortable voting yes on this recommendation without any analysis as to the impact and
Okay, Mr. Reed, you want to say something?
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. My name is Connor Viedem, I'm the town administrator in Easton, and one of my responsibilities is managing the town's capital improvement plan. I just want to clarify a couple of points. Obviously, we all here respect fully that it is the voters of town meeting who get to decide whether any appropriation article is to move forward or not, but it's important in the context of this item to point a couple of things out. But first, is that when we talk about additional money, what we're talking about is $54,500 that is being moved from dollars not spent by the police, from prior capital appropriations that went through the citizen process of going to the capital planning committee, as these vehicles did, were voted up by those residents in a public meeting, and then those funds, because the police department was able to get good deals in the fiscal '18 and '19 capital budget, those funds went unspent. The $54,500 we're talking about is basically an accounting exercise of moving unspent money from advantageous prices we got in years past to cover something that was unanticipated in this year, namely, that there was a supply chain issue. This was not a decision made by the chief of police or the police department to say that they would like a nicer or fancier vehicle. This is the next most cost-effective vehicle available from a state authorized contract list, and it would take funds from an existing approved capital appropriation. This is not taking new money out of reserves, this is not taking money out of any department's operating budget. I think that that's important. As to the comment about Chief Sullivan not being at a meeting, Chief Sullivan was not invited to that meeting, so it is not reasonable to expect that he would have known that there would have been a particular question. It is worth noting that at that meeting, other department heads for other capital items, including over $2 million in capital that was voted to be approved for this coming year, were not there because they were not requested to be. Chief Sullivan was present at the capital planning committee this winter for this exact discussion, when the finance director, Emma Chief, presented the supply chain issue that had reared its head and an opportunity to replace a vehicle at the next best price with funds that had not been spent due to good prices achieved in the past. And the capital planning committee voted to recommend that and bring it forward to town meeting. Again, it is, of course, town meeting's choice, whether that is funded or not, but I think that all of those are important pieces of context here. And I think also important in the context is that we're talking $54,000. In total, the police department's capital spend for fiscal '20 will be about $186,000, and that is in comparison to over $2.5 million in spending approved by town meeting. That is similar to the over $2 million approved by the select board and the finance committee for the fiscal '21 budget. Thank you for allowing me to clarify.
Hannah To, 148 Randall Street. So, Administrator Reed just outlined to us that we are currently in a recession. I think we all know that. This is one of the worst economic situations Easton has seen in a long time. So, given all of that, I think it would be wise to maintain some excess funds. As we know, the reason why we couldn't get the three police cars and sub two was an issue of supply chains. However, we're only at the beginning of this recession, and supply chains have been crumbling. And I think that if we wait, if we continue down this economic path, there's also a great possibility that things could get even worse. Easton's economic budget is already in a really terrible place, and I think we all know that. I think it would be wise to have more available funds, available funds available in the future. Not only are we in a recession, we're also in a pandemic. I would like it to be clarified, if we don't spend these funds, will they go back specifically to the police, or will they go back to general capital funds? Because I think specific issues may arise. For example, maybe we need more specific capital funds going towards health and community services, or fire and emergency services. So, if it is true that they just go back to general capital funds, I think it would be wise to keep them there, especially in the case that if we're needing more EMT calls or if it's the case that something else comes up, I think that would be a wise investment to make for our future. The second point is, I'm curious as to how response, how many police calls we've had, given the state of coronavirus, and whether that's changed, whether we are seeing a much higher demand in other departments such as health and community services, EMT services over police services. If it's true that we're using police cars less, I don't know if it's true, I'm just wondering, then maybe we don't need to address this capital issue right away, and we should be actually saving this for other capital issues.
There, I think that there was one question at the beginning, which is what happens to the funds if they're not appropriated? I think the second part was more commentary in terms of potential where you might like to see those resources allocated overall. On the first part, I believe that the two pieces of the surplus appropriations from prior year would still stay, and then the town at its right, if they so chose, wouldn't vote to appropriate the additional funds needed for the capital request. Is that a fair summary?
If it's borrowing. In this case, so there was two questions. One was regarding whether, if this is not funded tonight, where do those funds go? Yes? And then the second was more of a technical question that I'm going to have the chief come speak to regarding the use of cruisers during a pandemic, their role in health responses and things like that. Is that fair? Great. So, the first question, if this is not funded, and it's a valid concern, I more than, really, I think anyone would be the first to admit that we are in a very difficult time financially. No one is going to try and dissuade anyone of that tonight, quite the opposite. If those funds are not spent, they don't go into a capital appropriation, they would then become free cash, unspent funds that could then later be allocated typically, in good practice, is back to a capital expense, because free cash is one-time money, right? It's like having extra money at the end of the month. You can't plan on it and count on it recurring, so you try to not use that in operating costs, because our operating costs are driven by people. People deliver our services. So, the more one-time money you plug into the operating budget, the bigger fiscal cliff you set yourself up for when that money expires. So, you are correct, if it is unspent, it would turn into free cash. Free cash could be an important source for reserves. However, it's not a zero sum where the choice is spend it and spend $54,000, or don't spend it and spend nothing. You do run the risk, as with any capital maintenance plan, that if you do not replace an asset when it's reached a point of inoperability, you run the risk of spending more money to keep an aged and inadequate piece of fleet on the road. So, we may end up spending more money through the police operating budget on repair and maintenance for a vehicle than those vehicles are worth. So, that's the first part. And the second part, Chief Sullivan, if you could come up and speak to, you know, Chris. And the second part, Chief Sullivan, if you could come up and speak to, you know, calls for service, the role that cruisers like this have, particularly with health-related matters.
My name is Gary Sullivan, I'm the police chief. I apologize to the person who asked that question, but from where I'm sitting, I couldn't hear anything that you were saying. It was partially the mask and things. So if I could start at the beginning and explain to everyone our fleet management program and how it works. So each year, I go before Capital Planning Committee, and I present them a letter in advance with our capital needs. Typically, I am requesting three vehicles. In addition to the letter, I provide a quote from MHQ, which is the business that we, the dealership that we do business with. And then lastly, it breaks down the quote, tells you exactly how much the vehicle will cost. And then finally, I present our fleet inventory, which is the number of vehicles that are used by the police department. It's a breakdown of the year, make, model, and current mileage. So I'd like to talk specifically about our patrol fleet, because that's what we're talking about here with this specific article. We have nine marked cars that are being used by 28 police officers. That's an average of 3.11 officers assigned to each car. Every officer is assigned a vehicle, so that when he or she reports to work, they know exactly which car they're expected to drive. If for some reason there's a repair and maintenance issue with that vehicle and it's taken offline, there's a secondary vehicle that they're assigned to. An important note is, the police department always has at least four uniformed officers working at all times, 24/7. On occasion, there may be five or six working. It's dependent on police officers taking time off, it could be training, court, whatever the case may be, but there are always a minimum of four police officers working. So therefore, there are always a minimum of four marked cars out on the road. Oftentimes, they're, they are parked, they could be at the police station, taking a break, doing reports, but for the most of the duration of their shifts, they're out on the road, they're idling, they're being driven from call to call, and at times at elevated speeds, depending on the nature and the seriousness of that call. So I think that's very important to note, and the particular vehicle, and I believe it has already been stated twice, we are seeking to fund for a Dodge Durango SUV. That was not my first choice, but as was noted, MHQ, it is beyond our control. They told me that no Dodge charges would be available until the fall of 2020 at a minimum. So what we would do with this particular vehicle is we'd put it into our patrol fleet, and then we would remove one vehicle from the patrol fleet. We've already identified which vehicle that is. It's a 2017 Ford Explorer with 101,000 miles on it. What we would do with that car is we would either turn it in, or would reallocate it to our fleet, a total fleet inventory that's not used by uniformed police officers on patrol. Our team would get together, would look at the repair and maintenance history of all these vehicles, and would make a determination then, do we want to keep this? Do we want to turn it in? If we keep it, we remove another vehicle from our fleet inventory and do the same analysis. How much money have we spent on repair and maintenance? Any warranty issues? I would like to, just to close this, just to, we are appropriated every year $23,500 in our repair and maintenance budget. The last four fiscal years, beginning in fiscal year 2016, I'd like to tell you how much that we've spent on repairs and maintenance of our vehicles. Fiscal year '16, $35,000. Fiscal year '17, $25,000. Fiscal year '18, $37,300. And fiscal year '19, $25,000. This year, we are expected to spend all of that money and potentially go into the red. One thing of note, we've gone into the red every single fiscal year, the past four years. Two of the last four years, we've difficulty gone into the red and spent an average of $13,000 above and beyond what we're budgeted. So it's something to take into consideration. As your chief, it's important to me that we provide the best and safest equipment to our police officers. It's important in their response to calls for service, whether it's an emergency or a non-emergency. You call us, we go, we'll be there and we'll help you to the best of our abilities. If for some reason, the voters, which is absolutely, you're right, and we respect that, if you vote down this particular article and this is put off for another year, or even at special town meeting, we will have a vehicle, again, that's already in our patrol fleet with 101,000 miles, and it will likely accumulate another 20,000 to 25,000 miles, which will increase our repair and maintenance issues. And I don't think that's necessarily a smart idea. That's my personal opinion as your chief. So that's pretty much, I don't know if anybody has any questions about the, I know somebody had mentioned about the coronavirus, and is there a specific question that I can try to help you with? Anybody?
The question was, the role of these vehicles in health response. So, police in general respond to emergency health calls during the coronavirus, or will they not support the events?
Sure. So our police officers go to every single medical emergency. It doesn't matter what it is. We go and we support the fire department. Oftentimes, we're the first ones there, and we have, our officers are all trained in first responder training, CPR. We have defibrillators in our vehicles. We have naloxone, also known as Narcan, in our vehicles. And I would like to say that there have been, over the course of several years since we first got it, there have been many lifesaving events by our fire department and your police officers as well. So we respond to all these calls together. We had a minimum staffing working during the pandemic. We have since changed our operations around a little bit, because we need to get back a little bit to normal. But really, nothing's changed for the police department. You call and we go.
I think that was the only question, chief. So if the next person wants to come up, I know there's somebody waiting over there too. I don't know how long you've been waiting, but let's take the person in the middle and then we'll go over here.
Hi, my name is Nicole D'Chenzo, 1 Janine Drive. My main questions, I was just going to echo what Hannah asked, but your discussion brought up another question I have, which has to do with the dealership that the PD partners with. I'm just curious if, like, in the history of your partnership with the dealership, if any supply chain issues have come up before, and if this might be like a concern for your future time being partnered with the dealership.
Sure. I've been chief for five years. I started, I was promoted in July of 2015. Since becoming chief, this has never happened to me. We have consistently used, the name of the dealership is MHQ. There are some time lags, oftentimes when we do place an order, especially we get approval at special town meeting. We typically don't even see these new vehicles until April and May of that spring. So their turnaround is not very good. They seem to, you know, to cater to some of the larger agencies that use them. But to answer your question, this is the first time that it's happened to me since I've been chief.
Okay, we're going to take a question over here.
Cameron Pressy, Ten Apple Blossom Lane. Thank you, Chief Sullivan. I appreciate the fact that the police are, you know, worried about keeping us healthy, working with fire and rescue, to make sure that everyone gets to where they need to be and stays safe. With that being said, I have a question about the finances. You're talking about staying in the red, or being in the red, either for the past two of the, two of the past four years, or the all the past four years. I think I misheard you there. So was your implication there that if we buy this $53,000, or $54,500 vehicle, you'll have a better chance at balancing your budget than you will if you do the maintenance costs, about $35,000 it seemed to be about the average? Was that the implication?
So, yes, we went into the red all four years, and two of the four years were significantly into the red by an average of about $13,000 per fiscal year. It's just fact-based, I just wanted to provide the information to the audience and just simply state that it's really an unknown, right? Because we could really purchase a lemon and be in the same situation that we could possibly be in moving forward. So it's just providing the facts, so that I can give you as much information as possible so that you can make the best decision for the town. Nothing more than that.
Okay, so just to clarify that, will this vehicle affect the police budget at all? Will it help us balance the budget, or will it put us more in the red, or no effect?
So, to be clear, the fiscal 2021 budget is balanced. In general, to the chief's point, it's, it's unknown. We can't be predictive, but generally, replacing an older vehicle with a newer one will help you save money on repair costs. So in theory, that could help keep the repair costs in the police department down, the police and every other department. At the end of every fiscal year, whatever money they don't spend rolls into free cash, which can then be used for reserves or other capital purchases. So it's, it's kind of a closed ecosystem. It helps the finances overall when we have newer assets, but no, I don't believe the chief was saying, nor could we in good faith say, with some degree of a predictive analysis, that it definitely won't cost money, because to his point, you could just, the tire could blow out, you could have major repair issues. But generally speaking, yes, a newer vehicle costs less to maintain. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to come back to the middle.
Jennifer Haley, 12 Tanglewood, and thank you, chief, for talking about carrying Narcan. That's really important to me, and that's, I think, where I'm coming from here, is we have this budget out here. Did we consider at all, or if we decide to vote this down? You know, the money will be free money, correct? Like you said. Can you take that money and put it towards, then, something like a social worker to help the police officers when we're having these problems in our, because let's face it, guys, we have COVID, we have a recession, we're just getting through the opioid epidemic, it's all over. We can't ignore that. And what scares me are these kids that we've lost. So I guess where I come out on this is, we could use that money to fund someone that could help these kids more, instead of putting it in a vehicle. I guess that's where I come out on this. I just don't see the need. I mean, I want you guys to have whatever you need, but a human life to me means more than $54,000 for a car. So I have to say that, and I want people to think of that when they're voting tonight. So that's all I really had to say. And if you can tell me, does that go towards, can that be used towards something like that? Can you think about it?
Not wisely. It can be.
Yeah.
And I, so I don't think any of us up here disagree with you. However, if we take the logic that the operating budget is in pain, so we should cease all funding on capital
Yeah.
and use that money, so let's say we did use it for somebody with a social work background to help with the police.
Like a party, or somebody to come in.
It would, if, it's one-time money, so let's say we hired someone, we would have no sustainability plan to keep them. So we would hire someone, train them, and then let them go at the end of the year, because that money would go away.
So how do we get it in the operating budget? Would be my next, and maybe we should talk.
I'm sorry.
How would we get this, how would we get something like that implemented in the town of Easton?
Well, I think we're going to talk more about that on Article 7, but in general, the answer is revenue, and that is fundamentally the challenge. And I will explain that in good detail, but we have, everything you're saying, we agree with you, and we feel it's our obligation to lay out the facts, that we don't have any department, whether it's the police, the fire department, the schools, none of our departments are overspending on capital. To the contrary, we are significantly underfunding our capital, and we have every year since at least 2008.
Okay.
I'm sure all, you all drive here, right? We can't fund our roads adequately. We can't fund building repairs adequately, and we typically can't fund fleet management adequately, because we are already diverting at least 50% of the money we should use for free cash you're talking about. We're already taking that every single year and putting it in the operating budget to support staff across the board, including in the schools.
That's an important point. I think you need to point that out, because if you don't know that, it doesn't appear that way.
I appreciate that, thank you.
So I'm just saying. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Is someone in the back raising your hand? Yes, sir. Can you say that a little bit louder? So you just called the question, is there a second? Can I, can I have, sir, can you just stand up again? Can you yell nice and loud your name and address?
[inaudible].
And there was a second, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor calling the question, please raise your card, I need your card, right hand, so two-thirds. All those opposed? Okay, we have a two-thirds majority vote, a two-thirds vote to call the question, so now we're going to move to a vote. Okay, so all of those in favor of Article 5 passing, I need you now to raise your right, your hand, with your card in your right hand. And all of those opposed to Article 5 passing. And Article 5 passes by a majority.
I have a point of information for the speaker, or question. Can we motion to recount that two-thirds majority that called the question? Versus, you know, the holding it up, to do something a little more, you know, precise?
You already called it, and you called it timely, so you could have questioned that, but now it's too late, because the motion already.
Since the motion has already gone through, it's now too late to recall or ask about the two-thirds majority vote.
Thank you. Point of order, if you'd let us that, know that in the future.
Okay, Article 6, Selectman Broussard.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of funding the economic items in fiscal year 2019, contained in a collective bargaining agreement negotiated between the town and the Easton Patrol Officers Association for the period of July 1st, 2018, and through June 30th, 2021, and that to meet this appropriation, $25,000 shall be transferred from the fiscal year 2020 Employee Benefits and Insurance Budget. By way of explanation, this article will fund the first-year cost items of a new collective bargaining agreement with the Easton Patrol Officers Association for fiscal years 2019 through 2021. As was the case for all other town union contracts, funding for this article is available in a collective bargaining set aside in the fiscal year 2020 Employee Benefits and Insurance Budget planned for this purpose and carried in the fiscal year 2020 budget as adopted by Town Meeting. The Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any comments, questions, or concerns relative to Article Number 6? Okay, I see one here first. Again, you have to state your name and your address.
Cameron Pressy, Ten Apple Blossom Lane, Southeaston. How much money are we allocating to the CBA negotiations right here? That's my first question. My second question is, if we don't pass this article, what does the police union, what's the next step for them? Can they construct a new CBA? Are they restricted to the old one?
So those are good questions. The first one, as far as what is the funding we're talking about, it's $25,000, and that is money that was set aside. So the town, under Chapter 150E of state law, through its Select Board and I, negotiate collective bargaining agreements with all of our town unions. We have eight of them. The Easton Patrol Officers is just one. Under that law, when management and labor reach a good-faith agreement on terms, typically economic, we put that forward on the warrant with an affirmative recommendation to the legislative body, which in Easton is Town Meeting. So we, as part of our normal budget planning process, we can anticipate, our contracts go on three-year cycles. So we know, for example, all eight of those agreements are expiring at the end of fiscal '21, so I'll be busy negotiating the successor agreements for '22, '23, and '24. Before we do that, we look at the market, we look at what comparable communities are paying, we do economic studies to basically get a rough ballpark idea on the management side, what that may cost. I shouldn't be saying this with so many members of the police who need a room, but we get that estimate, and we program it right into the budget, and we account for it publicly, because this is a local government, we must, and we let voters know that that's a set aside for us to draw on once those agreements are ratified, because that is a better financial choice than not setting the money aside and basically waiting for it to happen, and then we have to pull money from somewhere else. So this is $25,000. It's money that was set aside in the fiscal '19 and '20 budgets that were approved by Town Meeting, and it's basically, again, this is kind of an accounting exercise, it's moving funds that we had anticipated and set aside over here, and moving it here to ratify that agreement. The second question, what happens if it's voted down, is it basically gets sent back to the table, so to speak? to the table, so to speak? And then the select board and myself spend a lot more time renegotiating with the police on what would likely be a very comparable package to come back at a later date, at which point, it's kind of like tolling. If there is pay in fiscal '19, and we spend another year or two renegotiating, you may still owe pay for '19. So instead of $25,000, it may be 50, or 75, or 100 later. So it basically just sends you back to the table to negotiate again. Thank you.
Okay, in the middle.
Tiffany Sears, 16 Della Park Lane. I kind of had a similar question, but I'm kind of confused by your answer now. So is this for the '21, '22, '23 years, or it's for past?
I apologize for that. I talk too quick normally, and the mask doesn't help. It's for fiscal '19, and this contract is for '19, '20, and '21. So the estimates of the cost impacts of it are already carried in the '20 budget and in the proposed '21 budget. So this article is limited to fiscal '19, the $25,000 for back pay there that was negotiated and not yet ratified.
Oh, so this is for payment for work they already did?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, seeing that, we're moving to a vote. On Article number six, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand with your card. And all those opposed, please signify by raising your right hand with your card. And that is, that Article VI passes by a simple majority vote. Article VII.
Good evening. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from any available source of funds, borrow or bond, to defray the departmental and incidental expenses of the town not otherwise provided for, for the fiscal year commencing on July 1st, 2020, or take any other action relative thereto. Motion. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $86,47,427 to fund the omnibus budget for fiscal 2021, in the amounts and for the purposes as printed in the handout, and that to meet this appropriation, $78,571,056 shall be raised from taxation, $993,000 shall be transferred from free cash, $500,000 shall be transferred from the stabilization fund, $125,000 shall be transferred from the special education reserve fund, $121,748 shall be transferred from septic betterments receipts reserved for appropriation, $3,123,623 shall be transferred from water enterprise receipts, $525,000 shall be transferred from sewer enterprise receipts, $1,388,000 shall be transferred from solid waste and recycling enterprise receipts, $100,000 shall be transferred from solid waste and recycling surplus, and $600,000 shall be transferred from cable franchise and related revenue enterprise receipts, all to meet the town charges, including the salaries of several elected and appointed officers of the town for fiscal year 2021. Explanation, this is the annual operating budget for the town.
Select board?
Sorry, the select board recommends.
Finance committee?
Finance committee recommends.
Okay, so before we move to asking questions, I hope everybody picked up the operating budget handout. What we're gonna do is I'm gonna read all the budget line items. If anyone has any holds, and any comments on any one budget line item, I want you to yell out "hold," I'll mark it down here, okay? And those that are not held, that we can move forward to a vote, will move forward to a vote, and then we'll come back to the holds. Does that make sense? After the presentation. Does that make sense, everybody? Okay, good. Okay, so, select board. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Connor, you gonna do a presentation first?
No, I'm waiting for you.
Okay. Select board, sorry, didn't hear if anybody yelled out. Finance committee? Reserve fund? Accountant? Assessors? Town collector? Treasurer? Town council? Information technology? Town clerk? Planning and economic development? Other general government? Police? Public safety dispatch? Fire and rescue? Inspection services? DPW administration? Health and community services? Library? School department? Regional and county school assessments? Maturing debt and interest? Employee benefits and insurance? Sewer department enterprise? Water division enterprise? Solid waste and recycling enterprise? PEG access and cable-related fees enterprise? Okay, so the way that I heard it was, we have holds on reserve fund, police, health and community services, and school department. Okay, so now, before the presentation- Right, you're gonna do the presentation first. Okay, so now we'll let Connor do the presentation first, and then we'll vote.
Thank you. So, in trying to think about how to frame tonight's discussion about the budget that I am putting forward, I thought it was important to take a look back before we look into fiscal '21, in what will surely be a difficult year, and probably a very difficult few years for the community. And so I pulled this rather on-the-nose graphic that I gave to my predecessor six years ago for the opening to his budget presentation to town meeting in May of 2014, identifying that the community was in a precarious place from a financial perspective, that we were facing declining and stagnant state revenue for critical revenue sources, including education, that at that time, we had not had new growth recover to where it was before the last recession, and that those two things combining basically make it inescapable in an environment where we have to balance the budget by law, that our services eventually would begin to decline. There was the rhetorical question of whether or not we're going to look to new sources of revenue, whether or not we would adopt policy that would seek to incentivize growth, both infrastructure and land use, and whether or not we were going to have the ability, moving into the future, to continue to do our best, to do the right thing by all of you and all of our departments, and deliver high-quality services with a financially responsible budget. In those six years, a lot has happened. And on the revenue side, in 2016, shortly after that was put forward, in 2016, an override developed to address these exact issues, to address a structural, quantifiable, predictable, reliable, structural revenue deficit, was rejected resoundingly, unequivocally by voters, by a two-to-one margin. And the message that was delivered at that point was very clear to people like me, whose job it is to balance a budget, which is live within your means regardless of what those revenue means are. The select board around the same time adopted a fund balance policy. And what that is, is basically some standards for what we think our reserve funds need to be in order to be prepared, God forbid, we hit a terrible recession like 2008 again. And thankfully, that policy was adopted and adhered to quite strictly by all town and school departments, and it has not been easy. That has produced a lot of lean budgets that frankly have made this somewhat of a running joke for people who work with me, that every budget in every town meeting I've been at, there will not be an easy budget conversation, because we have tried to limit the use of one-time money, of free cash in the operating budget, because that is not a sustainable, long-term practice, because it results in us underfunding our capital needs, our roads, our buildings, things of that nature. And it also erodes our ability to build up the stabilization fund, which is basically the town's rainy day account, that you transfer money of free cash into to protect against catastrophic service cuts in devastating recessions. And in the four years since that was adopted by the select board, we have more than doubled the stabilization fund in this town, and we've cut our reserve use of the budget in half. That's good news. Unfortunately, more work remained, and we didn't get all the way there yet. And last year, we were still relying on about $1 million of free cash in our, which is a reserve fund in our operating budget to sustain our service level. We did not sit on our hands and simply say, "The override failed, there's nothing we can do." We have completed our largest infrastructure projects in history, much to the plight of folks who need to drive in five corners or 138. We have aggressively invested in sewer to drive sustainable new growth, and new growth in fiscal '18, '19, and '20, as in response to that partial end, also of a broader positive economic environment, were at record highs that were not seen since before the last recession. Zoning, I think I saw the planning chair in here, has been reformed numerous times. Land use is a very important municipal policy, and that has been reformed numerous times with an eye towards making development easier, making density for housing, to create more equitable housing, more possible, and to drive growth. There's also been some really good news on the revenue side, including in this room, eight months ago, which, because we're all living in dog years now, feels like a lifetime ago, where voters overwhelmingly approved a debt exclusion override to support the Easton Early Elementary School project and invest in the future of the children of this community. At the same time, in those six years, a push came from voters of this body to fund an operational audit and assess our spending. When you're asking folks to pay more taxes, it's not an unreasonable request for people to say, "Well, where is the money going?" Someone earlier tonight made a very, I think, honest response to what I said, which is that if we don't explain these things well enough, people don't know, and that's not your fault, that means I need to do better. And back then, that was basically the central question, where is the money going, and are we doing a good enough job efficiently allocating the limited dollars that we have? The audit came back and corroborated what our benchmarking had shown, which is that Easton, across the board and without exception, in the school department, the police department, the fire department, all of our departments spend far fewer dollars per capita than our economically comparable peers, and that we generally staff fewer people to do the same amount of work. The audit recommended that we hire additional staff. The town and the schools have worked together to reduce annual costs in our operating budget by millions of dollars during that period of time, aggressively pursuing solar initiatives, maxing out our net metering credits, purchasing and converting all lights in the community to LEDs, and other energy efficiency projects that obviously have the added benefit of reducing our carbon footprint, as well as driving costs down. We joined the State Group Insurance Commission for Employee Health Insurance Benefits and actualized hundreds of thousands of dollars of savings in that first year, the savings of which have compounded since. We have outsourced a variety of services. We have reorganized departments, we are pursuing regional service provision models, and we negotiated and achieved conservative three-year wage agreements with all of our labor unions. The result is that, without exception, our town and school departments spend less money and have fewer people performing the work than our economically comparable peers, and that they also generally spend less money per capita than our neighbors in the geographic area. We have a budget subcommittee in Easton that is composed of members of the school committee, the finance committee, and the select board, as well as myself and the superintendent. And the intention of this committee, the governing rules of which were, again, adopted by this body, is to basically be a working team that looks at long-term trends on the revenue and expense side of our ledger, and makes recommendations to folks about whether or not we're gonna be meeting our marks, preserving our services, or doing better in the future, or whether that is likely to not be the case. We have been doing annual benchmarking internally, in addition to the external audit that was conducted by an outside management firm, we do internal benchmarking every year with publicly available data from the Department of Revenue. And back when we started doing that six years ago, when I had that cute little split-road graph, on average, our departments were spending 9% less per capita than our peers. That has grown. In the most recent year, we were 20% behind the spending of our comparable peers on a per capita level. In actual dollar spent, we're nearly $20 million behind. The budget before you tonight, the general fund budget, is about $82 million. Our peers have very different revenue sheets, because of very different policy decisions about sewer and commercial growth many, many decades ago, and so no one is here tonight to say that we want you to give $20 million more dollars in revenue, but this is important context. You cannot see it well up there, but what those blue and red bars represent is the variation from all of our departments, from the average spending of all of our peers. And as I said before, without exception, all of our departments are running leaner. I touched through that, because it's going to inform the conversation we all need to have tonight, because as was already noted very truthfully, we are in a difficult time, and we are heading into a few difficult years. We face economic conditions so severe that there are no parallels in the lifetimes of anyone in this room. The nation is suffering from unthinkable economic, physical, social, and emotional strife. It is a very difficult time for the United States, it is a difficult time for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and it's a difficult time for this community. Despite a global pandemic, a historic recession, and incredibly difficult times for the country, none of that changes our legal obligation to produce a balanced budget whose expenses can be backed into what revenue we think we'll have. And so that is what we have. I am proposing a balanced budget for fiscal '21. Five weeks ago, that budget was in a deficit of almost $2.5 million. That has been eliminated as of today, and it's balanced as required by law. Our revenue and expenses are both projected to increase by just over 1%, 1.3% for a total budget of $82,656,000 next year. This budget is regressive, and that's not a reflection of desires from anyone in management or any of your elected leaders, that this is desirable from a programmatic perspective. This is simply the result of having such a bleak revenue forecast. In order to cut that $2.5 million deficit down, more than 26 full-time equivalent jobs have been eliminated across the town and school government. Our employees stepped up and gave back more than $230,000 in their contractually obligated raises to help balance the budget, and we've applied more than $1.6 million in reserves to close that gap. As difficult as all of those items were, and as difficult as the coming year will be, it's my professional judgment that this is the best expenditure plan that we can afford, given our limited revenue. When we look at the general outlook of the economy in the United States as it pertains to- When we look at the general outlook of the economy in the United States as it pertains to municipal budgeting, there is not currently any guarantee of a state or federal financial relief package devoted to offsetting revenue shortfalls. There's been a lot of attention to the $2.2 trillion CARES Act, which is an unbelievable amount of money. That funding is available for Easton in the amount of 2.2 million. However, that funding can only be used for very restrictive and specific items related to coronavirus directly and cannot be used to support existing personnel or services, even if those personnel and services help us in our fight against coronavirus. That is not my choice, that is the law. So we have no guarantee and no current outlook and reason to expect that that money will necessarily be available to fund our general operations. Because of that, municipal and state budgets around the country are unfortunately in a position to be making draconian cuts, including to many people who are on the front line of responding to coronavirus in the first place. This is estimated by economic think tanks to be in the hundreds of billions of dollars of budget cuts coming to states, cities, and towns around this country for fiscal '21. National unemployment was considered measured positive news that it was only 13.3% in May. And had I told any of you this in November, you would think that that was a crazy thing to say. Unemployment in Massachusetts has actually increased, unlike the national trend. And it's at over 16% in May. Projections by the United States Federal Reserve and the Congressional Budget Office estimate that unemployment is going to be between 9.5% to over 11% at the end of this calendar year. For context, the single worst month of the Great Recession, which was formally the worst recession of all of our lifetimes, was 10% unemployment. The outlook for gross domestic product in the United States is similarly bad, ranging from 5 and a negative 5.5% to negative 6.5%. With recoveries to pre-coronavirus levels of economic output not occurring till calendar year 2022, 18 months from now, per the Congressional Budget Office and the Federal Reserve. When we talk about these things, they seem distant and remote and probably remarkably boring. But it's not just data, it's real and it's here. According to state unemployment data, unemployment in Easton, when it was last measured at the end of May, is 19.5%. That is horrible, and that's real economic suffering for a lot of folks in this community. It was 2% in February. When we start drilling down on what the economic outlook is, regionally, unfortunately, the news is not better. May tax collections for the Commonwealth put us on track as a state to fall 2.25 billion short this fiscal year ending in eight days. Current outlooks from economists project a pretty bad revenue forecast picture for the Commonwealth. The most recent one is in the area of a $6 billion shortfall to the state of Massachusetts next year in fiscal '21, which is a drop of almost 20% from the initial revenue expectations that the Commonwealth and lawmakers were using to build their fiscal '21 budget. Moving down into our level in Easton, as I said before, we're looking at a projected increase in revenue of just over 1%, about $1 million. That's going to bring our total revenue to $82,656,000 and change. The only category that we are projecting to grow is property taxation by about 2.37 million. That gain is offset by projected cuts to state aid and local receipts of $1.5 million respectively. In this budget, we are relying on our reserves, our stabilization fund, our free cash, and special education reserve in the amount of 1.6 million. That's just below a third of our total reserve capacity. We still had a budget deficit last week. That changed effectively over the weekend in response to efforts by the school committee and the Select Board late last week and early today. That $208,000 deficit has been eliminated with additional reserve fund application, 125,000 of special education reserve funds, as well as an additional 83,000 and change of free cash. In total, we're looking at spending over 1.6 million in one-time money next year. 993,000 of free cash, a half million in general stabilization funds, and 125,000 of special education reserve funds. Reserve use is not ideal, nor is it sustainable for numerous years. However, it is preferable compared to additional cuts. That is the alternative. In addition to the 26 jobs already eliminated, rather than using additional reserves, the alternative would be additional cuts to already deeply regressive town and school operating budgets. Further, this application of reserves is consistent with those financial management guidelines that the Board adopted, which stated specifically that these funds should be used by the town to address cyclical declines in our revenues, generally resulting from economic factors outside of our control. I began this presentation talking a little bit about the town's history, and I want to spend a little more time on that. We've had a structural revenue deficit where basically it's a fancy way of saying our expenses grow faster than our revenue since at least 2008 and '09. Easton benefited around that time from an operational override that boosted our stabilization fund in 2007, immediately prior, unfortunately, to the worst recession since the Depression. You can see on this graph behind me that in 2007 and '08, immediately following that override, the reserve use in the budget was effectively nothing. Starting in fiscal year 2009, state aid began to be cut, not as a punitive measure, but as a reality because the state has to balance their books just like we do. As state revenue began to be cut, the town relied increasingly on reserve funds to fill that gap. And since then, we have done that every single year. There's an arrow, a green one, where for the first time after cuts started to state aid in 2008, it took us eight years to get back to where we were. Not adjusting for inflation, not adjusting for costs of doing business, nothing, it took eight years. And at that time, the override in Easton was rejected and a bunch of more austere policies were adopted. And that's why you see, starting in '18, '19, and '20, our reserve use began to go down, which is in the right direction. State aid to Easton is our second-largest source of revenue. It's behind only property taxation in its size and importance. The vast majority of state aid is composed of Chapter 70 education aid. Under the Commonwealth's education funding formula, Easton is what is called a minimum aid community. And what that means is that Easton gets the minimum increase of Chapter 70 education assistance allowed by law every year. And that increase is $30 per student. So for a school district our size, that means that they're getting about a $100,000 revenue increase for a district that costs more than $42 million to operate and a district that is leaner than comparable ones in the first place. That is not sustainable, and it's not adequate. In light of the current estimates, projecting multi-billion-dollar revenue shortfalls for the Commonwealth in fiscal '21, we're estimating a reduction of about $1 million in state revenue next year, which is a cut of about 8%. That would bring us to a total of just shy of $12 million. Given current outlooks for the Commonwealth, you may recall the number I said was 20% short of their January estimate. It is possible that once the Commonwealth adopts a budget based on whatever their revenue will look like, that we may be farther behind them thus. If so, budgets will need to be cut further or reserves will need to be tapped in a higher number. As I touched on before, and as you could see here under that red line, when cuts to state aid began in '08 and '09, it took until 2016 for that revenue category, our second-largest revenue category, our second-most-important revenue category, to recover. We lost over $2 million in cumulative revenue to the community during those eight years. This is pretty typical during recessions that the private sector recovers quicker. However, tax collections lag. On average, it takes five years for income tax and other taxes to the Commonwealth to recover after a recession. In our example, it took eight years for our revenue to come back. So we should expect that as hard as this budget will be, that if the coronavirus recession looks anything like all the other recessions we've had, that this will probably be a difficult few years. None of this is stated here to point fingers at the Commonwealth because they, like us, must balance their budgets. They have to balance their books regardless of what that revenue picture looks like. And frankly, their revenue portfolio is in many ways more susceptible to broader economic shocks than ours because it's driven by consumption-based taxes and income tax. When you have 20% of your workforce unemployed, your income tax collections are going to get crushed. There's no way around that. This recap's included here because this history is relevant. It is always relevant, but it is relevant now more than ever because this budget is brutally lean. It presents a difficult choice for the community, and there will be a temptation to try to fix issues that people see in this budget through amendments tonight on the floor of town meeting. None of the cuts that we had to make, painful as they were deliberately to town and school operating budgets to balance this budget, nor any adjustments here tonight, are going to address that deeper structural revenue issue or change the reality that all of our departments on the town and school side are currently and historically under-resourced, not as a function of overspending in one department at the cost of another. We have a really good team here and everyone works really well together and is very respectful of all of our shared challenges. But as a function of a reality that we have insufficient revenue growth on a year-over-year basis, and that's been the case for more than a decade, and that that compounds and gets more difficult as time goes on. As I mentioned, taxation is the only revenue source that we're projecting, or the only recurring revenue source that we're projecting to increase next year. Local receipts are projected to decrease by about $1.5 million, which is a cut of 7.5%. In particular, we are anticipating reductions in local receipt revenues from certain things tied closely to economic activity, like motor vehicle excise taxes, meals tax collections, licenses, permits, and investment income. A summary of our revenue here, again, you have cuts to state aid and local receipts, taxes are growing, and our use of reserves is increasing. On the expense side, we have the same number, the budget's balanced, it's increasing just over $1 million for a total of $82,656,000. The budget is brutally lean, it eliminates more than 26 positions across the town and school government. And as I said before, these reductions are not a reflection of our opinion that they don't provide value to the community. We trust and know that they do, and I think you do too. They're in response to an incredible recession. Of that $1 million increase, nearly all of it is going to fix costs, which are costs that we have little to no immediate control over. This includes debt payments, insurance benefits, county assessments, charter school assessments from the Commonwealth. On the town department side, major departments, the police, are level-funded at zero. Fire is increasing by just about 4%, which is largely just a reflection of a grant performance period ending. Public Works is being reduced, all other town departments are being reduced. In total, town budgets are being cut, just shy of $50,000 under the current year level. The Easton school budget is regressive, it is growing by less than 1% at 0.64%. And the net there is just over $1 million. In order for the town to get our budget next year under what we're spending this year, we had to do a variety of relatively dramatic things. First and foremost is that we received wage freezes, which is basically a complete give-back of any raise, performance-based or cost of living, by the Department of Public Works Union, by the Professional Administrative Employees Association, which is the department heads and clerical staff, as well as the Town Clerical Union, all non-union positions, the chiefs, myself, and all leadership positions. This is almost $170,000 in wages that employees voluntarily return to the community to try to help close this gap. And I cannot thank them enough for that. We have made significant cuts to overtime and other expenses across all departments. We will be regionalizing our dispatch services in this coming fiscal year and therefore eliminating at least five jobs. We've eliminated a job in municipal finance. We are reorganizing inspectional and health and community services positions, to be clear, not public health positions. These are customer service and administrative positions that are being reduced. We're going to shift our reliance more to technology-based service delivery. This is not cutting public health during a pandemic. That's one and a half jobs. We are eliminating a position in the police department and cutting the police department's overtime budget by 20%. And we're eliminating a position in the fire department when that grant period ends. In the net, we're looking at eliminating about 9.5 jobs in the town government, which is more than 5% of our total workforce right now. We've cut these budgets by over $1.5 million in the past five weeks. The net result is a town department budget of $17.386 million, which is a decrease of about a quarter point below what we spent this year. Concurrent to our efforts, the superintendent of the school committee and the school community have also been working hard to bring their budget down as low as possible. The school budget next year is $42,633,000. It was voted by the school committee at this level, which is an increase of just more than a quarter million over current spending at 0.64%. It's a reduction of more than $1.1 million in the past five weeks. This budget level includes $69,000 of wage concessions from school employees, as well as the elimination of 16 and 3/4 full-time positions, including 10 teachers, four paraprofessionals, three ABA tax, as well as a reduction in hours for pre-K positioning custodial staff, representing about 3.5% of the school department's workforce of 496 positions. I cannot state enough tonight, this is a regressive budget that reflects our revenue challenges and the long-term structural revenue deficit that we have before us. Fixed costs and other expenses are projected at about $22.5 million next year. It's an increase of just shy of 4% over our current budget levels. Unfortunately, this eats up the very, very, very limited revenue we have available. Fixed costs are those that we don't have a ton of immediate control over. Insurances, pension assessments, assessments from the southeastern regional school, county and Commonwealth assessments. In addition to the Commonwealth providing us revenue, they also give us a bill every year that we have to pay for certain things, including charter school tuition for kids who go to those schools. Last year, that increased by $1.5 million. In total, we're looking at an expense budget of $86.6 million. I won't reiterate the summary that we've talked through here. In closing, this budget was a very difficult process, not just for me, but for all the department heads, for the community, for the schools. The $2.5 million deficit's been eliminated in the past five weeks. Adopting this budget as proposed, which is my recommendation, is only the first step in what is, without a doubt, going to be a long and challenging journey for the community. COVID-19 is obviously still with us. I don't think any of us are wearing these masks for a fashion statement. I certainly don't like speaking into it for this long. It's going to challenge our abilities in ways that we don't know yet, which has been the case for the past few months. It will challenge the schools, it will challenge all of us. We frequently find out the new standards applicable that many of our departments are enforcing at the same time you do via press conference. The Commonwealth has not adopted a budget yet. Hopefully, new information comes out that is positive and perhaps things are not as bad as they look. And if that's the case, we can amend in the right direction in the fall. The inverse is also true. The economy is still reeling, there's a million different projections out there. Most of them are generally not positive. And it looks like this is going to be a challenging road for the country, for the state, and for Easton. Finally, we headed into this crisis with a challenge that made it hit us a bit harder than we would like, which is that we've had a longstanding structural revenue deficit that's only going to be worsened by the things that I've spoken about tonight. The community will have largely difficult choices in front of you relating to this revenue shortfall this year as it pertains to our abilities to fund services adequately and as it pertains to whether or not that's a level of service that the community desires to see continue. As we've stated before, the town hasn't sat on our hands and we have worked in the areas where we can to try to promote growth. But a lot of those are 5, 10, and 15-year investments. We have worked hard to push down on expenses, including very conservative wage agreements. In the short term, the immediate option for folks would be an override. And that's a very difficult conversation to have when unemployment is 20%. I want to close thanking all of you for being here. I know that it's hot, that you're uncomfortable, I am too. I want to thank the Select Board, the Finance Committee, the School Committee, Superintendent, all of our department heads and all of our employees and all of you for your extraordinary efforts needed and your participation to get us here. This budget's been incredibly challenging. But as I stated before, I believe it is the best foot we can put forward given our incredible revenue constraints. And I'm hopeful, given the turnout here, even with the challenges we have, that the renewed attention being paid on budgeting and programming will drive a deeper understanding about the shared challenges that we all face as a team and bring people together to try and solve those in the long term for the community. So I'm happy to take questions about it. So I'm happy to take questions about it.
Okay, so any questions for Connor while he's up here?
Aaron Bornstein, thirty-one Wald Drive, a slightly tangential question, but meaningful this summer. Can you speak to how the census affects our state budgeting and what we need to be mindful about with doing the U.S. Census?
I would love the town clerk to answer that question because there are state officials in the audience as well, and I don't want to get that wrong.
Hi. Essentially, we're going to encourage you to everybody to be counted in the U.S. Census that's done every ten years. It's really important. Not only does it help with districting, but also it is the layer for determining funding sources for things that come from the federal government. So it is extremely important that everybody return or complete the U.S. Census so that Easton's numbers remain where they are or higher if we've seen growth and continue to have a percentage of increase in funding along the way.
Dylan DeCosta, two zero one Sheridan Street. Just a point of clarification here. The reserve fund is not the stabilization fund, right? So this sixty K, if untouched at the end of the year, will become free cash?
Yes. So the reserve, the reserve fund on the op, on the balance sheet you see here, and I know the language is probably not the best. The Finance Committee over here maintains care and custody of a very, very small reserve fund, and that's what it is. It's sixty grand. The Finance Committee can have a meeting and vote to release some of those funds at any point during the fiscal year for small, unanticipated things that pop up. That is not our reserve balance. Our reserve balance, which is a function of free cash and stabilization, is somewhere in the area of four point six or four point seven million. So those are not the same.
Great. Thank you very much.
Good catch. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Connor while he's here about the presentation? Okay, so relative to Article VII, before the presentation, we went through and we did the holds. So on all of the line items that were not held, at this point, I'm going to ask everybody to vote on the budget on those line items that were not held. So it's, it's all of the line items except for four of them. So all of those in favor of Article VII passing without the hold, please raise your hand with the card in your hand. Okay, good. And now all of those opposed to Article VII to those unheld items. Okay, so Article VII, as far as the unheld items, operating budget passes by a two-thirds majority vote. Okay. Now, we're going to move on to the held items. And we can go through them one at a time. So the first one that was held was the reserve fund. Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to the reserve fund? I see one.
Dylan DeCosta, two zero one Sheridan Street. I just asked one of the questions that I had. The remainder of them were answered by Mr. Reed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so then I'm going to move on to... Okay, so we'll just do one at a time. So now regarding the reserve fund, all those in favor of that line item passing on Article VII, please raise your right hand with the card in your hand. Okay, and all of those opposed with the reserve fund line item passing. Okay, so the reserve fund line item passes by a two-thirds majority vote. Moving down to police. Any questions, comments, or concerns about that line item in the operating budget handout? Okay, one in the middle.
Nicole D'Chenzo, one Janine Drive. I'm aware of and understand the severe budget challenges our town has continually faced.
Nicole, you have to get a little closer to the mic. Sorry.
I'm a... Nicole D'Chenzo, one Janine Drive. Regarding the police budget, I just want to speak on that, that I'm aware of and understand the severe budget challenges our town has continually faced for many years. As a recent alum of OA, I witnessed the unfortunate but inescapable cuts to not only the music department, but nearly all major areas of the town's K through twelve education system when I reluctantly voted to adopt the proposed budget at last year's town meeting. So the reality of the constraints put on our town finances are not far away from me. Despite these challenges, however, I feel that it is still worthwhile to address policing as a system and interrogate whether our investment in it, as it currently stands, truly serves and reflects our town's needs. As are all areas of the budget, I recognize that EPD is already underfunded, especially in comparison to surrounding towns of similar background. This does not mean, however, that we cannot or should not further redirect funds from policing to reinvest in our community in other ways. I'm not suggesting that redirecting police funds will serve as a quick fix to our financial woes, but based on how dire the current local, regional, and national state of the economy is due to an obscenely negligent federal response to the worst global public health crisis of our lifetimes, I believe it's worthwhile to reinvest in community services in any way we can, at the very least as a form of harm reduction and to cushion those areas vital to community livelihood and future well-being, most importantly, health and education. I'm in no way suggesting that the brutality and misconduct we have been witnessing nationwide represents the conduct of EPD. Let me be clear that I personally cannot speak to the conduct of the EPD, and I am not directly criticizing Easton police chiefs or officers, but speaking to how policing operates as a system and its effectiveness in serving the community as a public good. Directing our attention to policing as a system, I believe it is vital that we understand and distinguish the connections between empirically proven unconscious practices of racial profiling and a documented history between police brutality and people of color in all areas of our country. Easton has not been immune to this, as a recently-written article spoke about a young black resident's experience of being racially profiled as a heroin dealer in my own neighborhood. We are facing a prominent national civil rights movement, and with the upcoming election and town budget finalizations, Easton sits at a unique intersection to serve as a leader for change by creating a vision of public safety that truly reflects and serves our needs as a community. Redirecting funding from the police does not mean getting rid of the police. Our police are currently overworked and overburdened, and we want to remove that burden from them. What I would like to call for is building up of specialized services separate from and around police so that officers are not called to respond to situations and crises that they are, by their jobs very designed, not meant to solve. It would lessen the burden placed on police by allowing them to focus their response to more appropriate scenarios of violent crime, such as murder, assault, and battery, et cetera. Relying on police to solve nonviolent issues like homelessness, mental illness, addiction, and school discipline risks the escalation of interactions which may result in unnecessary conflict and criminalizes behavior that would be better handled by a separate, professional, and compassionate social safety system. This means building up community health and education services through redirecting funding to support community-led alternatives to policing and public safety, which can include culturally competent psychologists, counselors, and mental health specialists, and trauma-informed crisis intervention specialists. Easton has fairly low rates of violent crime, as is, in comparison to surrounding cities and municipal areas because of our town's history of investing in the community and education system. However, the national opioid epidemic, as referenced by previous speakers, has been far-reaching and found its grips in our community, which results in disproportionately higher rates of addiction and other mental health crises that police should not be tasked with being first responders to. However, this does not solve the root of the problem as we need more public health funding so we can treat people addicted to drugs before they overdose. I appreciate the collaborative efforts the Easton Police Department has established with the town's health and community services, but they should not be burdened with responding to such incidents that would be more appropriate for mental health professionals who solely dedicate their work to responding to such situations. We should be preventative rather than reactive in preventing crime before it happens by investing into the education, health, and safety of our community. With that being said, Madam Moderator, I move to amend Article VII by reducing the police department operating budget by two hundred seventy-one thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars and transferring seventy-five thousand dollars of that money to the Health and Community Services operating budget and one hundred ninety-six thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars of that money to the school department's operating budget. Thereby, the police department's fiscal year twenty-one budget will be reduced from four million three hundred seventy-two thousand one hundred nineteen dollars to four million one hundred thousand seven hundred twenty dollars. The Health and Community Services fiscal year twenty-one budget will be increased by seventy-five thousand dollars, and the school department's fiscal year twenty-one budget will be increased by one hundred ninety-six thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars.
So...
I have it typed up here as well.
Okay, so I need a copy of that if you could. Okay, just so that everybody is clear, and I, and I'm going to read Nicole's amendment up here because I think it's probably better acoustics up here. So this amendment is from Nicole D'Chenzo, one Janine Drive. "I move to amend Article VII by reducing the police department operating budget by two hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars and transferring seventy-five thousand dollars of that money to the Health and Community Services operating budget and one hundred ninety-six thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars of that money to the school department's operating budget. Thereby, the police department's fiscal year twenty-one budget will be reduced from four million three hundred and seventy-two thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars to four million one hundred thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. The Health and Community Service Services fiscal twenty-one budget will be increased by seventy-five thousand dollars, and the school department's fiscal twenty-one budget will be increased by one hundred ninety-six thousand dollars, three hundred and, one hundred ninety-six, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars." Is that correct? Okay. So I need, if, if anybody... Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard a second earlier, but is there a second?
So, first of all, that was very thoughtful, but it was also long, so I will probably not get every single piece in there. So forgive me. I'll try to touch on a few of the main points as far as it pertains to the budget and the broader issue, to say, basically out of the gate, and I appreciate your thoughtfulness and your professionalism of how you're approaching this, that you're looking at a larger systemic problem in the United States with policing as an institution. And I guess the first thing I want to address in the room is that, and the chief will speak to this as well, we hear you and we don't disagree with you that police reform in the United States is important and that it's something that we need to be taking seriously. There's currently a legislative package that's been proposed by the governor to enact certain important reforms for policing and Massachusetts if a police chief supports. Right now, there doesn't exist a state-mandated certification or accreditation system for municipal police departments. There's no state requirement there. The chief has long advocated for that because he spent his career pursuing and pushing for the professionalization of police, not just in Easton, but as an industry, because specifically to try to be in front of and avoid the horrible things that we're seeing in Minneapolis and in so many other cities and towns around the United States. We're fortunate that we do have the chief who has made that the focus of his career. We have a department in the absence of that state regulatory framework where there isn't a certification. There's basically a peer review process, a voluntary one, and we have a department here in Easton that has voluntarily submitted itself to that since two thousand nine. The current chief, Sullivan, was not chief at that time, but he, working with the former chief, Craig, was the manager to get Easton's policies on all these incredibly important topics: use of force, de-escalation, implicit bias, to a place where they reflected best practices and most modern practices in the industry for that peer review process so that they could receive that accreditation. The chief has kept current and has sought to implement modern reforms into police policy to ensure that we do have a community department here and not a quasi-military department that we're seeing awful things happen around the country. None of that's to say that the chief, the Select Board, me, any of us think that getting a voluntary accreditation and pursuing best policy practices means that the police are an institution beyond critique or recommendation for change. The opposite is true. And the chief has a record of showing that he is always trying to pursue the best policies, not just to keep the officers safe, but to keep the community safe and to try and do the right thing by people. We don't disagree, and I'm sure many officers in this room don't disagree, that they would, in a better world, they would not be the ones administering Narcan at the scene of an overdose. I think many officers in this room do not disagree with you that they do not want to be filling social service roles. The chief certainly doesn't think that that's the best way that that could possibly happen. But as I touched on in the budget presentation, town meeting's ability tonight is, as was very specifically and accurately moved, to amend appropriations. And in this case, we're talking roughly two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I think it's important that we don't shy away from the necessary self-examination that we all need to be doing right now, looking at our priorities in government, looking at how we deliver services. But I think it's important that we be mindful that trying to make these types of shifts requires a thoughtful study and implementation plan that is not here right now. It also requires a lot bigger folks at the table than people like me or the police chief because we can't, much like we can't have a policy about the budget in 2020 without talking about sewer and land use policies in the 1970s, we can't really have a conversation about the current failed safety net in the United States and the reality that police officers do end up doing jobs that, especially for some of the ones in the room that have some gray hair, they probably didn't think they'd be doing when they signed up. We can't separate that reality from federal tax policy from decades ago, from a general posture, from bipartisan administrations that is anti-taxation, that has moved the United States away from entitlement spending and towards grant programs and market-driven solutions. We can't separate that conversation from the closure of state mental health hospitals and inpatient facilities that have resulted in the use of grants for group homes, like the one that I worked in before I worked in Easton, where I, as a student with a political science and philosophy degree, was administering lithium to folks struggling from schizophrenia, being paid twelve fifty an hour to do it. That is not how we should take care of each other, and it is a tragedy that that is what we have. I don't disagree with you. The chief does not disagree with you. However, as the town's chief fiscal officer, I have an obligation to give you my professional opinion, which is that to move money in these amounts from one budget to another will have significant negative impacts and will not in any way guarantee the change in policy that we are talking about. It's not me dissuading and saying we shouldn't look into this and engage in the study and do the work to see if there are ways we can work together and do a better job of social service delivery. The chief and the director of health are going to speak after me to talk about efforts they've done so far to do that. But something resonated with me where you said you do not want, nor does anyone, want overworked... overworked and overburdened police. I think that's important. And again, I think we're all, we all do well to remember what we agree on here, and we all agree on that. And one of the things that we do not want in Easton, we do not want overburdened and burned-out officers with budgets that have been slashed, who can't go to trainings, and who are on the job more tired than they ought to be. That's when people make mistakes. That's when people don't do their best work. And if the goal is more compassionate, more professional, and more competent policing, I think that that may not be the way to get there. Again, I agree in the big picture with you. I just have a professional difference of opinion on the way to achieve it. If we were to cut the police department budget, which to be clear, has already been reduced by $200,000 since its initial request five weeks ago, it right now stands at a zero. It is receiving zero new dollars next year. They are reducing personnel, patrol staff. They already have fewer staff by about 10% compared to comparable communities. And the chief's not here asking to hire more because the Easton Police Department under his leadership and the leaders before him have not come forward and sought large quasi-military agencies. If a department in Easton staffed to national averages, we'd have 58 police. I think that's a bit crazy. That is overpolicing, and that's why we have 36. We have significantly less, we have 40% less police in Easton than the United States average. If we were to cut 270,000, that would basically necessitate, because we have already cut overtime by 20%, the places left for additional cuts would be people. That would necessitate the elimination of four or five jobs basically immediately. But it doesn't reduce the calls for service. The department receives 15,000 of them annually, and thankfully, you are right, they are mostly nonviolent. But the calls for service don't go down just because our budget does. And so what happens, we already have a small minimum manning, it's four, four on a shift for a town of 25,000. When you have fewer officers employed overall, what that means is that you're calling more people in on overtime, and then that ends up potentially running the risk of exactly what I think everyone here agrees, none of us should want, which is having overworked and overburdened officers. Again, I give a ton of credit. I, you know, think public speaking is like right behind death for most of us, what we want to be doing, myself included. I don't know how I ended up in this job sometimes, but it's, we don't necessarily disagree in the big picture, but I do recommend, as your town administrator and as your CFO against that. And one last note I want to make is that scale matters. If you move 270,000 from the police budget, the police budget is 5% of Easton's annual spending. Somebody had a really, really good comment at, I think, a finance committee meeting recently, where they said that budgets are value statements. I agree. The Easton Police Budget is 1/10th the size of the public schools. That's not a criticism of the public schools. The public schools are our largest service provider. They have an unbelievably important job, and I think they do a remarkable job with the resources that they have. But if we move, we cut 270,000, I believe 75 was going to Health and Community Services, so that is less than 200,000 to go to the schools. The school's operating budget's over $42 million. Their budget would still be regressive, deeply so. This would inflict grievous harm on a smaller department for understandable policy desire to change the way that we do social services in this country and to do a better job taking care of each other, but it would inflict a tremendous amount of harm on a smaller department and move an amount of money to the largest one that, while of course is better than none, would not change the paradigm and would still be regressive. And so I think that that's important for voters to keep in mind tonight. Chief Sullivan, do you want to add to this? This is your department.
I just want to read a statement that I issued to the press on May 31st, which was six days after Mr. Floyd was killed in Minneapolis. I just want to share it with you. "The killing of George Floyd sickens me, as it sickens all good police officers who have chosen profession with the protection and safeguarding of life and putting the lives of others ahead of our own is paramount. I denounce the actions of these police officers, and I am mindful that the actions of a few reflect not only on the many, but also reflect on the failings of the system. All persons, those who call for help and those suspected of breaking the law, are to be treated like human beings. I remain proud to be a police officer, but the men and women of the Easton Police Department are mindful that we are only effective as a public safety organization if we have the faith and the support of the citizens. We will work every day to gain and maintain that trust." What I said almost one month ago, I still mean today. You'll see a lot of police officers in the room, some of them are working, some are not, and they feel the same way that I do. There's a lot of work to be done. Governor Baker proposed a bill. I watched this press conference last week, and I agree with a lot of what he's proposing in his bill. Many of the police chiefs in our association agree with the bill. We've been pushing for reforms for many years, very important reforms, and I think there's a lot of work to be done. I do, I don't know if Claire Cronin is in the room, but I know she's a big proponent of that bill, she's behind it, and I support you. And again, there's a lot of work that we need to do, and we will do that. We always strive for excellence. I don't know that we will ever get there, but we always do that, and we will continue to do so moving forward. I just want to talk briefly about what the town administrator had spoken to about some of the cuts in the police department, specifically our training budget and our overtime budget. Five years ago, our training budget was around $5,5500 for 30-some-odd police officers. It's insufficient. There's a lot more training and a lot more work that needs to be done. I pushed in our budget proposals a few years back to increase the budget to $31,000, and I thank this community for supporting us, and we've had that in our budget, I believe, for now three years now, so thank you. We, that particular budget has been cut by approximately $6,000. Our overtime budget, as the town administrator had mentioned, has been cut by 96, approximately $96,000. That's very significant, and I want to explain why. The training budget is specifically for registration fees and other related costs. It's not to pay overtime or for the officer to attend the training. That's what overtime is for. As you all know, your police officers work 24/7, and 2/3 of our police department work between the hours of 4:00 PM and 8:00 AM, which means that any time those officers attend training, which is typically done during normal business hours, Monday through Friday, they're compensated at a time and a half. So that cut of $96,000 truly impacts our ability to provide training to all of our officers. It really does. But we will make it happen. It's a difficult cut, it's a difficult thing for us, a pill for us to swallow, but we'll get through it. As far as the amendment, I'd just like to say this, that as the town administrator said, we will lose personnel, and that will impact our ability to provide some of the programs that we do, such as the school resource officer. A few years back, we had two full-time resource officers. Right now, we have one school resource officer who works at the Southeast Regional School, Olive Rams High School, and the remainder of the Easton Public Schools. That officer who, his name is Chris Aker, does a great job. It's a very difficult task for one police officer to do, it's being spread very thin between all of these schools, but he does a great job. So that's one program that I believe in. I've believed in my entire tenure as chief. I support the program, and I don't, I'd hate to see it go away. I would like to talk, and I don't want to take up a lot of time, but I would like to talk about the importance of accreditation and how it impacts your police department. I promise you I'll be brief. The Easton Police Department has been accredited since 2009. I served as the accreditation manager at that time, under now-retired chief Alan Krajec, who's been a big proponent of accreditation since the 2000s and maybe even the late 90s. He brought us to a level of certification which is just a lower standard than accreditation, but I know he and I shared the same beliefs, that you strive for excellence and you go for the top goal, which is accreditation. The Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission oversees the accreditation process, which consists of two major components: the establishment of a body of professional standards for police agencies to meet, and a voluntary assessment process by which agencies can be publicly recognized for meeting those standards considered best practices for the profession. We've been accredited once in 2009, and we've been reaccredited three times since then, most recently in August of 2019. It's a very lengthy, in-depth process. It's a lot of work. We're very grateful to be awarded and recognized for that. We are the 35th police agency in the state of Massachusetts to accomplish that achievement. Even today, there are only 79 municipalities participating in this program. That's not enough. We expect more of our police departments, just like you expect more of us. I expect more of myself and our officers. I would like to read in closing one final statement. For those of you who remember in 2016, the town voted to have an operational audit, and the police department was part of that. There were a lot of talking points about the number of officers that we have, the average number of officers per thousand residents. To your point about violent crime, we're very fortunate that this community has very little violent crime. I think that's something we should all be proud of. But one, one statement that the auditor made with regard or respect to our accreditation award and recognition, I'd like to read what he said. "Despite the recent audit with the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission, we reviewed the directives and found that the agency has consistently updated its policy and procedure manual to meet the changes in professional policing practices. More importantly, the agency has documented the issuance of updated policies to Easton Police Staff and has reviewed the policies during in-service training. As an example, the use of force policies meet current industry standards, including the use of minimal force necessary to affect an arrest or protect the officer or citizen from imminent harm. The policy also requires immediate medical attention be provided to persons who have subjected the use of force, all use of force incidents, are reviewed by a supervisor and command-level personnel, and an annual analysis conducted on all use of force incidents." And then finally, in closing, "We believe the agency's current policy and procedure manual reflects best, excuse me, best business practices, and the directives are followed by agency personnel." That's something that we're very proud of, and I think it's important for our community. And as our town administrator said, I'm in total agreement. There's much more work to do. We are not perfect. We are far from it. We are human beings, just like everybody in this room. But again, we will strive towards excellence, and we'll do the best job that we can, regardless of your vote tonight. There are a lot of programs that the men and women of our department provide to our community, and I don't want to take up a lot of time, but they're very, very important programs. I have a lot of talking points, and I'd be happy to share these with any of the community members who would like to see them, whether it's tonight or another day. Please reach out to me, and I'll be happy to share them with you, so, but thank you.
Thank you, Connor. Thank you, chief. So I'm going to go over here because this gentleman has been standing there for quite a while, so we're going to go here, and then we'll go back and forth. Sir?
I almost fell asleep.
Can I have your name and your, and your address, please?
Madam Moderator, Dave Clifton, Four Lamplight Lane. Members of the board, town administrator, and members of town meeting. Wow, has times changed. I can't think of ever coming to a town meeting when everybody had to wear a mask. Nobody could sit beside each other. Times have changed. There are many folks that may be out of work. Money is tight. But I'll tell you, folks, this is not the time to cut public safety. As a matter of fact, we need police officers more today than ever before. None of us realize what the days, the weeks, and the months ahead of us will bring. Yes, police officers have specific training, and their training is going to change as a result of what's happened around the country. We have a very qualified chief of police. Public safety should always be a top priority in the town of Easton, Massachusetts. And I tell you, it was my dad who once said, a long time ago, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of helping others." That's what police officers do. Yes, we could use more police officers, but let's not take a giant step backwards. Let's give the police officers a favorable support tonight. Let them know that we support them. I say vote down the amendment. Let's start over, and let's go home strong. Thank God for public safety.
Okay, ma'am.
Janice Wolf, 18 Pleasant Street. I have a multi-part question. First, Connor, you referenced that if that nearly $300,000 comes from the police budget, it would probably require losing about four officers. What other impacts would that have in other parts of our budget? Because my understanding is that Easton self-funds its unemployment, and we would then have to pay those people. Like, how would that affect that? That's part one. Sorry. Part two, chief, even if there were people in health and health services to handle different types of calls or things, would a police officer still be going on those calls to make sure it's safe for somebody to go in there? And three, to add that money to the Health and Community Services, that would require hiring another person, correct? And then four, how would the school be using that budget? We haven't heard anything from Dr. Cabral tonight, so how would the school plan to use that money? And would it be, how would it actually lower crime or reduce the police officers' jobs? I think that's all of them.
Okay. So I have one and two, the chief, I have one and three, the chief has two, and Dr. Cabral has four. The first question, as far as what is the impact? Yes, the town of Easton self-insures for unemployment, so when we lay folks off, we pay those unemployment costs, so it's not a direct net savings. So it's not as simple as saying you cut $270,000 from police, how many officers does 270 pay for? That's how many? You lay off the officers and the net. You may have to lay more officers off or other people to... You may have to lay more officers off or other people to pay the unemployment of the ones you lay off. That's the first one. What was the other one you had for me? Oh, it was about if we appropriate the funds to health and community services, do they have to spend it? No, and we had this, we had ironically, exact opposite conversation of exactly this, I believe two years ago, in the wake of Parkland, where folks were understandably concerned about another disgusting social illness that inflicts the United States at an unacceptably high rate than the rest of the developed world, which is school shootings. And at that time, folks felt very strongly, and we had a spirited debate, as we're having tonight, to do the opposite thing, which was to take money out of reserves and hire more police so we could have additional school resource officers. And, we very honestly had that conversation and explained that Town Meeting is an appropriating body. The executive branch, in this case the Select Board, and me at their direction, or for the schools, the School Committee, decide and program how funds are spent. So Town Meeting can move 75,000 from any revenue source or cut from another department and put it in Health and Community Services, but doesn't force any particular hiring decision, and it can't. So those are my two pieces. I forgot the Chiefs, and I know Dr. Cabral's up next, so I'm gonna move.
Thank you Connor.
So the answer to your question in respect to police still responding to these incidents, yes, we would. We are first responders, and we are obligated, and oftentimes, as you know, we often arrive before the fire department, only because we're more mobile than they are. We do have a program in place, it's called Taking Action for Prevention. About five years ago, met with Wings of Hope, and we have a collaborative effort with Director Kristen Kennedy and her team from Health and Community Services. We have an outreach liaison that works on some of these issues. Police and fire respond. We share some resources with family and the victims. The outreach liaison will follow up within 24 or 48 hours thereafter. It's not perfect, but it's worked out very well for us. So, thank you.
And you had a question for Dr. Cabral too, as well, right?
Yeah, that if this money was given to the school, how would it be used to fund the programs that people are asking for? And how would it take work away from the police department?
I think it's a little difficult for them to hear back, back there, which we didn't really anticipate, so.
Uh, yes, I apologize, it's kind of a black hole back there, and I can't read any lips, it's very difficult. We're definitely paying attention, we just are having trouble hearing you. It's a, it's an extremely fair question, it makes sense. What would the school department do with the money? I'll be honest, well, I'm always honest. In the spirit of transparency, I could never answer that right now. That $200,000 in our budget, truly, I don't wanna, it's not a drop in the bucket by any means, but that's literally one student's placement in a special education program, for example. So I could tell you four things that we would do with that money. I could say we would hire mental health professionals, which of course would be my intention. Tomorrow, something could happen, and we would be required by state law to change that funding. It would be disingenuous of me to make any sort of pledge and then have to change it. The nature of the school department is very different than anything else. We start in September, so our budget, we're sort of predicting who's going to show up to us in September, and we hope to get that straight. We are so lean right now, we don't have extra money to fill in unanticipated expenses. And so, it's one of the reasons we're using money from the special education revolving account this year. So, I, in all transparency, I could never answer that question right now. It certainly would not hire anyone to backfill the calls that the police department is getting at this time. That's a longer conversation. I think all of us at the department, head level, are invested in having, in terms of education, for the community, our students, and, and our faculty as well. But it's, I mean, our, this budget ends in eight days. We would have to have the replacement program in place July 1st. And I know, at least on our end, we do not have that in place right now.
Thank you Dr. Cabral, and Chief Sullivan and Connor. In the back, I see someone. Can I have your name and your address, please?
No.
Michelle McGee, 127th Street. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna deny it at this point, because we haven't, because of the amendment, we've kind of lumped all three of these last line items together. And I think that we still, we're having a good debate, and I think we still need to hear from some more citizens. So with that said, I'm gonna go over here.
Thank you.
Carol Nestle, 37 Mechanic Street. First of all, to everybody who's worked on this, I can't imagine the level of work that's gone in and under incredibly difficult circumstances, so thank you all. My specific question is for the Chief. In looking at how layoffs typically happen, and looking at your newest hires on the force, I'm curious if having to lay off four or five or six or seven officers would adversely affect what diversity we have in the department?
I apologize, the speaker's not very good back where I was standing. Could you please repeat the question?
I'm curious if you had to lay off four, five, or six officers in the department, and based on the way, officers are usually laid off based on seniority and whatever, the newest guy goes, would that adversely affect the diversity we have in the department now?
Yes, it could.
Thank you, okay, I'm gonna jump all the way over here because I see a gentleman standing over here.
Charles Malo, 2 Scottsdale Precinct 2. Out of due consideration for Health and Human Services, which is a necessity, I thought about this, and we're very fortunate to have a police chief of the caliber of Gary Sullivan and Fire Chief Kevin Patridge, the Select Board that we have. And, there's no guarantees here, but there's a pretty simplistic approach to helping some of these issues we're talking about tonight. If each resident in the town wanted to donate $5, give it to the Select Board, they'd have to vote to accept it. That $5 bill would cover all the expenses of Health and Human Services. Someone donated 10, some people 20. You could bring on another teacher, you could bring on another, another police officer. Problem solved. And if people would give consideration to that, we wouldn't be having the discussion about amending the article as we are. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm gonna jump right back to the middle. Is that okay? I'll wipe my mic.
Hi, how are ya? My name's Maria DeRosa, and I live at 260 Lincoln Street in Stoughton. Thank you very much, I appreciate you.
In Stoughton?
Oh, I'm so sorry, my hometown, I live at 260 Lincoln Street in Easton, sorry.
You scared me there for a minute.
Sorry, scared myself. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, I appreciate it. I definitely think that this isn't an issue that we should stand up and say that we all want to go home, and that we're tired, and we don't want to talk about this. I mean, I am originally from Stoughton, but I've lived in Easton for quite a few years now. And, you know, looking around this room, I can count on one hand the amount of black people and people of color that I see. I mean, Easton is very white, it's 98% white. And I think that it's really easy for people to dismiss a very eloquent, educated amendment because we don't see our neighbors who look like George Floyd. Maybe we don't have family who look like George Floyd. Maybe we don't have sons and daughters or brothers who look like George Floyd. But his life mattered, and Black Lives Matter. And I think that that's something we need to be thinking about. Thanks. The second thing I wanted to say that I find frustrating is that, the idea that by suggesting that we maybe move some funds from the police department in Easton, and thank you very much, I really do appreciate Chief, your commitment to what you were saying, that you really think we need structural change, I just think it's obvious we do, and I appreciate that. I don't think that suggesting that we move funds is anti-police, or telling police we don't care about them, or we don't appreciate them. I think that it's a step forward, and that we're moving with a changing society. Change isn't always bad. Change is often necessary. And I think that, again, it's easy for a community like Easton to say, "Wow, I'm sick of talking about this, I don't want to hear what other people have to say," when we're not seeing people we care about, and our neighbors who are black deal with these issues. And I appreciate that you referenced what happened off Elm Street. We did have a biracial couple move into Easton, and they were taunted into leaving. If you have not heard that story, you should definitely look it up. I know that, it broke my heart to hear that. No one wants to think of our town as being the kind of place where we wouldn't accept all different kinds of people. I did have a point to this, by the way. Not just a soapbox. I wanted to say that I appreciate you standing up here and giving that amendment. My question was, if we weren't allowed to reallocate the 75,000, my question was, is there any way that maybe there are some funds being considered for body cams or for dash cams? And I'm wondering if that's not in the budget now, if that's something that's in discussion, or maybe something that could be spoken about in the future? Or if we were to reallocate some funds, maybe not that amount, is that possibly something it could go towards? This was my question. Thanks, I appreciate it.
With respect to your point about body cameras, I'm not prepared tonight to give you any sense of how much that may cost. It's my understanding that it can be very expensive, simply just storing the data. And I don't know how that potentially affects public records and those types of issues. But again, you know, our eyes are open, our ears are open. We're willing to explore, you know, different ideas, but there is a, a significant cost, is my understanding, to make that purchase.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go over here.
Ingrid Brignoli Enson, 122 Turnpike Street. We had the, sorry, I'm not the most articulate, and I'm very nervous. There was, the statement said that every line item in a budget demonstrates your priorities. And I think that we are glossing over the fact that we have so much, so many teachers being laid off. We have 10 full-time teachers being laid off, paraprofessionals being laid off from this budget. So I think all of this discussion about, well, what would happen if we laid off four, was the, four-ish was the quote by our police chief. I think we're glossing over the fact that, yes, we might, by reallocating this money, we may have to lay off a few police officers, but we are laying off even more teachers. And that demonstrates that we are not prioritizing education in this town. And I personally, as an alumna of Oliver Ames, as somebody who has grown up and gone through Easton Public Schools my entire life, I think that is really disgraceful, as a town that we are not investing in our children, and in their education, and in their future. I think furthermore, I would rather have one student, this is also quoting from the superintendent, one student to use that money to place a student in need of special education, to hire mental health professionals, to not lay off these teachers. I would rather have that than a police officer, a school resource officer in our schools, introducing children to the criminal justice system earlier. On the subject, on the subject of school resource officers in our school, I know after Parkland, after Columbine, police officers in our schools have risen exponentially, and they have not stopped one single school shooting, ever. They are simply introducing children into the criminal justice system prematurely and starting them with a record? I'm, I'm sorry, but plenty of people have voiced their concerns without asking a question at the end. This is what I'm trying to say. That's it. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, and then they take another one in the middle. Hang on one second, sir. I can't hear you, you gotta stand up. You're gonna call the question, you're gonna call the question now. I think, again, please. I think again, I'm just gonna allow a couple more because we, like I said, we have now, we have now gone and combined all of these line items, police, health and community services, and school department. Yes? I need your name, sir. Oh, okay. Ma'am, please. Okay, so we have a, a couple of points to call the question, a couple of individuals to call the question. So at this point, I need a second? Okay, now, all of those in favor of, now, you have to, okay, all of those in favor of calling the question, now, this is relative to the amendment, right? There's an amendment on the floor, so we have to vote on the amendment first. First on whether or not to vote on the amendment. So, calling of the question, it's a two-thirds majority vote. All of those in favor of calling the question regarding the amendment, please raise your right hand. And it's a two-thirds, it's a two-thirds majority vote, one thing at a time. And you, please don't yell out of turn, okay? Okay, you can put, put your hands down. All of those opposed to calling the question at this point in time on the amendment, please raise your hand. Okay, you can put your hands down. And so that passed by a two-thirds majority vote. So now, so now, the question is regarding the amendment, okay? So, regarding the amendment is what we have to vote on first. So does anybody, it was, it's been read out loud, it's been seconded. So everybody understands what it is, right? Yes? So if a yes vote passes it, the amendment, okay? And then we would have to vote on the article as amended. But a yes vote, a majority, a simple majority passes it. Not a two-thirds majority, but a simple majority. So a yes vote passes the amendment, and then we vote on the article as amended. Everybody got that? And that would be a two-thirds majority.
Yeah, they don't understand the yes and no.
Okay. So, so, go ahead Connor.
So, to be clear, the yes, the question that's being voted on now, a yes vote would approve the amendment proposal and would cut the police budget as proposed. A no vote would defeat that amendment, and the amendment would fail, and it would go back to the budget that I proposed.
Right, that's correct. So then it would go back to the budget as proposed, and then we would either continue the debate or see what the, what the townspeople want to do, what the citizens want to do. So everybody understands? So, yes? I can't, I can't hear you, I'm sorry. You want to reconsider the, the call of the question? Account on the call of the question? That's what you want, is account? Okay? Okay? So everybody who is in favor of calling the question with regard to the motion to amend, please raise your right hand. Okay. Put your hands down, everybody. And who, who is against voting on the amendment right at this time? It's a clear two-thirds, like it was the first time. Okay, so, that being said, now we're gonna vote on the motion to amend. The amendment itself, rather, we're gonna vote on the amendment itself as it's written. And the amendment is to cut the budget the way that was presented by the citizen, okay? So all of those in favor of the amendment as was written and read a couple of times, please your right, raise your right hand. And it's a simple majority. Okay? All of those opposed to that amendment, please raise your right hand. Okay, so the amendment fails. Okay, so now we go back to Article 7, and now we're back on those three line items that we've now mixed together because the discussion has been that way, right? Police, health and community services, and school department. Is there any more questions, comments, or concerns on those three line items? Sir?
George Allen, 39 Central Street, Southeastern Nas. I'm a retired police officer from the Eastern Police Department. Many of you know me. I was a school resource officer, I was a dare officer, I was the first civil rights officer in this area and in Bristol County. When I was appointed civil rights officer, there was no training for us. I'm in favor of leaving the budget as it is currently written. When I was appointed in 1980, along with three other officers, the approximate population of the town then was 14,000 people. We had no grocery stores. Fast forward to 2020, look at the town now, we're over 25,000, probably close to the 26,000. Three grocery stores, a Target, many plazas, many housing developments. A minimum manning clause back in 1980, 81 was four offices, one on a desk, three on a road. Chief Sullivan earlier referred to the fact that currently we have four offices on the road at any given time. Sometimes five, maybe six, but minimum four. So in that 40 years difference, we've increased patrol by one car for 30 square miles of town. We've increased our population by almost 10, 20, 10, 15,000. And you talk about wanting to cut police services? The last thing you want to do is wait any length of time when you dial 911. This department is one of the finest in the area. Our training is top-notch. Even as a special police officer, I am currently, am now, am a per diem here at Stone Hill College. I am required to go to in-service training once a year, sometimes at my own expense, to maintain all my certifications. Those certifications are first responder, CPR, defibrillator, use of force, sometimes EDP training, which is emotionally disturbed person training, domestic violence training, and any other type of topic that might be pertinent to the time. I've seen a lot and done a lot in 32 years as a full-time officer. Some things I would rather forget, but I can't. I ask you and every single member of this, this town to support the police department as it stands now. We need them more than ever. What happened to Mr. Floyd was disgusting. Any police officer in this building will tell you that. We are responsible for the people we encounter to be safe and secure even when we're arresting them. They're in our hands, they're in our custody, we have to take care of them. That officer and those other three failed to do that. I was a school resource officer in this town for years. It was my most favorite job of all. I can count probably on one hand the amount of people I had to take into custody while working. My job as a school resource officer was to keep kids in school, to be creative, working with our school department, our psychologist, and other members of the school staff to help those children, keep them in school, keep them safe, and introduce them to the positive side of police work. I ask you and employ you to please vote and support this police department. Thank you.
Okay, over here in the corner.
Hannah To, 148 Randall Street. I think that towns and cities all over the country are expecting their police officers to do too much. In larger cities, we know that this is playing out as police brutality. And I'm not saying that's playing out here in Easton. I personally haven't experienced any bad misconduct from the police. I can only speak to my own experiences and they have been positive. But what we see here in Easton is that, as we've said, our police officers are overburdened and we're expecting them to respond to every task. And one reason for this is because we're expecting them to do so much. And even though police brutality isn't an issue here in Easton, another resident already brought up is because we have to look around this room. So many of you are all white and because of this, we have to question, how do we make our community more comfortable for residents of color, especially black residents, to move in? And I think that does have to do with public safety and community health. But even if you don't think that racism is in the police, or if you don't think that we need to address these structural systemic issues of racism, I think that you should also care about discussing these issues because there are ways we can collectively move to make the police department more effectively serve our town. We've talked a lot about this operational audit from 2017 of the police. I looked at this audit myself and one thing that I noted was the fact that they said that they need four patrolling units constantly around the town. But this becomes a problem when you're also pulling police officers off to do other tasks such as family violence counseling or routine check-ins with business. And I think it's a problem that we expect police officers to do everything. I think that, I'm not saying police officers in Easton are bad. Again, I'm not speaking about their conduct. I'm just saying, if we expect them to do so much, obviously we can't expect them to be perfect mental health professionals, we can't expect them to be perfect relationship counselors. We have great organizations in Easton like HUGS that work with a police officer. But what if we were to have departments such as Community and Health Services work with HUGS instead to have these trained professionals? The large majority of crime in Easton and violent crime have to do with sexual assault, substance, uh, like overdoses, domestic violence, and these are all issues where it's important to take preventative action. Education is more effective. We have many, uh, we have many great organizations in Easton, like I've said, Wings of Hope and HUGS. I'm not saying here that the police are doing a bad job, but because they do so much for us, I think it's unfair to expect of them to be perfect at everything they do. None of us are perfect at everything we do. And I know that items cannot be booked. I know that during these budget discussions, we can't bookmark specific items towards other budgets, but the average cost of an adjustment counselor in Massachusetts for schools is $57,000. Because of this, we've discussed in so many previous meetings how important it is for adjustment counselors. So many students struggle with mental health issues. A big issue we've been discussing in our town is this issue of resource officers, this issue of school shootings. As a recent alumni of Oliver Ames, I recognize myself how necessary it is to have these mental supports for students. I think it's necessary that we take preventive measures rather than reactive measures. For all of these reasons, I think that it's necessary that we staff our departments so that everyone can do their jobs perfectly. We shouldn't overburden, over-tire our police officers. And I think the way we do this is by reimagining our departments. Administrator Reed even said that we've re-administered, we've reconstructed our departments in the past. Why can't we do that again? I appreciate everything the police officers do in our town, but I think that we can all work to make this town safer. For this reason, I moved to amend Article 7 by reducing the police department FY21 operating budget by $60,000 and transferring $10,000 of that money to the Health and Community Services operating budget. And $50,000 of that money, which is about the cost of an adjustment counselor, to the school department's operating budget. Thereby, the police department's FY21 budget will be reduced from $4,372,119 to $4,312,000, the Health and Community Services FY21 budget will be increased by $10,000 and the school department FY21 budget will be increased by $50,000. Thank you all. I have that in writing as well.
You have, you have your amendment in writing?
Yes.
I need, I need the amendment up here, please. Okay, so I heard after the motion was brought up to me, I heard a second, right? And then I heard someone call the question, right? Who is that? I need you to stand up. I, I can't hear you. Can you come up? I'm sorry. Can you come to a microphone?
I requested the motion to be moved as well. Charles Malo, Two Scott Stammero.
Uh, just your name, ma'am.
Laura Fogel, 5 Chippity Lane. Close the question. I don't even know why we're talking so long. This is the longest discussion ever.
Okay, so, um, is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, so again, you all know how this goes. Motion to close the question is a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor of closing the question on the amendment, or voting on the amendment? What?
It's calling the question on the amendment.
Calling the question on the amendment, yeah. Okay, all of those opposed to calling the question on the amendment. That's clearly a two-thirds majority vote on calling the question on the amendment. Okay, so we're gonna vote on the amendment. Again, a yes vote will sustain it, the amendment as it's written, and I can reread it.
A point of order.
Yes.
Bill Palmer, 402 Center Street. I've lived in three town meeting towns my entire life. I've never heard people allowed, people, these kids have been waiting in line all night long following the rules. I don't even, I don't agree with their amendment. I agree with their intent, but the town officials are the one that got to talk, who, by the way, you all talked great, I agree with you. But this hasn't gone on a long time because these kids are asking questions. This has gone on a long time because the town officials answered questions and took 18 minutes and 12 minutes. And I, and, and second of all, the precedent that's being said here is that people can stand up and wait in a microphone to declare themselves in public, but any one of thousands of people can just stand up and hijack and declare the vote. This young lady made a legitimate motion, okay? They followed all the rules that everybody here does. And all the town officials, and then you allow people to close it with no discussion? That's absurd. You would get, one or two people can explain why they're favored or not. And I'd just like to say to all of them, some of whom I coached and some of whom I didn't, that I'm all very proud of you.
Okay, well, the question's been called, there's been a two-thirds majority vote, so we're gonna move and we're gonna vote on the amendment, okay? As it was written. So a yes vote will vote for the cut and a no vote will vote no on the amendment. Everybody understand? Just like we did before. Okay, so all those in favor of the amendment as was just laid out on the floor, which, which is virtually the same amendment as before, just a different amount of money appropriated. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And all of those opposed. Okay, so the noes have it. So that amendment does not pass. So now we are back again to the original article. Article 7, we're talking about the three line items. And I'm gonna go, I thought there was somebody over here, but maybe I'm wrong. In the red mask over there, have you been waiting? Yes?
My comments have nothing to do with the police department in general.
You have to, I'm sorry, you have to say your name and your address.
Karen Tucker, 226 Turnpike Street, Southeastern. You probably all know me, I'm a little lady that's been picking up the trash. If everybody did a little volunteer work, we wouldn't have this budget problem. We could do what we want to do in the school departments and what have you with your help. Everybody in this room has some kind of a talent that can donate to a school. Get yourself cori, go in and help the teachers. I don't do that kind of stuff. I used to, but I can't, I don't want to be cori. Anyways, I go out and I clean the streets. I work for the veterans' garden. I do face masks and I give them away for free. We can all put our 10 cents worth in and help. Give up one cup of coffee a week at Dunkin' Donuts or Starbucks or whatever. All that would help. Put it in a jug to help up the budget. It's simple. We had a president that's, and I, I will twist his quote a little bit. President Kennedy, ask not what you can do for your, the town can do for you, but what you can do for your town. Work. Do something. Don't sit at home and watch TV all day. I spent two hours a day for what, since, uh, I don't know, Good Friday until two weeks ago, I got bit. So I had to quit because medication was making me sick. But I will be out there again and I will be picking up your trash and putting it in bags and getting rid of it. And there are other things you guys can be doing to help out instead of complaining about, we had to cut this, we had to cut that. Put, like he said, put a couple bucks in a box and, and, and help the budget up. We all have extra cash somewhere. I'm not a wealthy person, but I will do what I can do to help. Amen.
Sorry. I'm gonna go back over here because she's been standing a while.
Kayla Bensler, 155 Washington. I was wondering if the department head for Health and Community Services could speak to what an increase in budget would do for them. I think we've heard from everyone else, but I think we've heard a lot advocating for Health and Community Service, but we haven't actually heard from them. Is there a department head?
Good evening. Those of you who don't know me, my name's Kristin Kennedy. I'm the Director of Health and Community Services. I'm gonna throw July 2015, 2015 out there. Chief Sullivan mentioned that's when he was sworn in. That's also when I was sworn in as Director of Health and Community Services and Health and Community Services came into being. It was kind of a new concept at the time and it took Board of Health, Council on Aging, Rec and Vet Services and put them under one umbrella. Over time, I've stood up here in front of town meetings, in front of the Select Board, in front of Boards of Health and others, and I've stated on numerous occasions that I believe it's Health and Community Services' mission to build bridges and eliminate silos as we move towards a place and a time where we all think about our health as something more than the absence of disease because our health is so much more than that. Prior to COVID-19 becoming the biggest public health challenge that we were facing, when Gary and I were sworn in together, one of the biggest public health challenges we were facing was the opioid crisis. Chief Sullivan has already spoken to a program that we put in place that operates kind of in the shadows, but is extremely effective and gets resources out to individuals and families that are suffering from the blight of opioid addiction. For the past three years, we, our two departments have also worked together to do Sharps collections. Health and Community Services has a long partnership with the police department, we have a long partnership with the school department. Education being the key to a lot of what Health and Community Services does. We're in the schools, working with the school nurses, providing information on things that are safe in your yard, things that are unsafe in your yard. We're working with the nurses in the COVID follow-up. They've been there for us and I have to thank Superintendent Cabral for allowing the school nurses to help us as we've all moved through COVID-19. We do a program called Bite Lab that is my health inspectors going out and speaking with all of your fourth grade students. This year, COVID stopped it. Not really. We got together with ECAT, it was taped, and it was still provided. We got together with ECAT, it was taped, and it was still provided to the students in the fourth grade. We work very hard to put a lot of programs out there and to address a lot of needs. We are, the issues facing this community and the country are a big part of what Health and Community Services and public health are in the future. I look forward to being a part of that and I appreciate the intent of transferring dollars to our budget. Doesn't mean that we instantly, instantly have a roadmap for what to do with those monies. What I do know is that we plan on being here and being part of the changes that we all want to see. Thank you.
Okay, in the middle.
I gotta go with the right protocol here. Move it up right there.
You could just actually move the microphone.
I don't even know. I don't know how it works.
Just move the microphone.
Just do it like this.
There you go.
I don't want to touch one, oh, I touched it. No, I get it. Okay, feel good. Joshua Peach, 810 Foundry Street, Southeastern, Mass. I'm gonna move this up a little bit. I spent the last 16 years investing my life into helping schools around the country, justify budget, understand where they can find savings or opportunities. I came here tonight fully open-minded. And I have to tell you, the young folks that have come up and talked in front of all of us, amazing. You should be very proud of yourself regardless of how you see things. You should be proud that you stood up and you spoke up. So Dr. Cabral will be probably the first person to tell you that I'm very supportive of the Eastern Public Schools. I will email her when she says something like, "There's only three people that watch the Eastern School Committee on TV and two of them are my parents and I'm the third." So I'm a huge advocate for her. But what I did hear her say is that she wouldn't be able to allocate the funds if there was to be an amendment made. She wouldn't be able to allocate the funds because the new budget year is in eight days. So we're having this conversation, talking about all these amendments and moving the money. And we're putting an additional strain on the schools to try to figure out what to do with the money and they don't know. I want to say one other thing. Couple people came up here and said, "Black Lives Matter." Can't agree more. And I can't thank the 100% of Black Lives that are wearing a badge in this room right now because otherwise we wouldn't have any people of color. And I think we need to think about that, all of us. None of us could have brought someone to represent the minorities in our town, to tell us how they feel, to give us their opportunity to talk about it. We're talking for them. Look around. Keep the budget the way that it is. Let's figure out how to find money for the schools. Let's do better and be better. In case you don't know, there's six phases to disaster. Anything, if it's substance abuse, earthquake, whatever, everybody goes off six phases. We're in phase five, start about April 27th. It's the disillusionment or crash phase. It's when we're the worst to each other and to ourselves. There's never more or better need for safety and security than right now. All of you were guided in here and sat where you were told. None of you, or very few of you, changed your seat. That's because you felt safe and that's most likely because of our police. Thank you.
Okay, over here to my left.
Cameron Pressy, 10 Apple Blossom Lane. Thank you. COVID sucks. I think we can all agree. When we were talking about these amendments before, a point was brought up by the Chief Sullivan that they would have to fire people or lay off police officers if the budget was passed, if the approximately $200,000 to $300,000 was taken out. Listen, that sucks. I'm gonna be honest. I don't want any police officer, any good person, to lose their job, lose their healthcare, lose their ability to pay for their home and to put food on their table for their family. I don't want that. 16.75, 16.75 teachers and counselors are already getting laid off because of COVID, including over two dozen, you know, or, and that encompasses over two dozen total layoffs in the Eastern administration and school system. Listen, I don't have the experience on the budget like all of you. I don't know. I don't know how this free cash works, all right? But we were talking about $54,500 earlier for a police cruiser. That could keep a cop on for a year. We don't know what we'll be in like in a year. This is true. Maybe it's just an operational thing, but it could keep someone on for a year. Could potentially keep two teachers employed for a year. So when we're up here putting out these amendments, it's not because we don't care about you. We don't care about your lives. We don't care about your families. We don't care about you protecting our community. We do. What we're saying is we care about all these other people who are already getting laid off, who already don't know what they're doing and are gonna be screwed over by this budget. COVID sucks. I'm not a budget person. I can't go up and say, "Oh yeah, $200,000, we know immediately that could be four officers rather than something else." I don't know how you play with the money. I don't know how you toss it around. So I guess to end, I'd like to ask Officer, Chief Sullivan, how can you be so certain that you will have to lay people off for, one, the $200,000 amendment, or B, the $60,000 amendment, even less, which have already been passed or been denied, I acknowledge, but, you know, I'll just, I'm rambling now. I'll end my question. Point made.
So the chief will back me up on some detail, but I, I agree with you that current circumstances suck for lack of a better technical term. But I, it's important that we clarify, you put two numbers out there, the 16 and 3/4 positions being lost in the school and that is terrible. But when you said the over two dozen, that's the aggregate because the town is also losing and eliminating employees and laying people off. It is not, we're not doing this in a vacuum. We are not asking the schools to lose positions without the town doing so. The Police Department will be eliminating a position. In total, the town will be eliminating nine and a half jobs next year, which is more than 5% of our workforce. I've had the great displeasure of being the one telling people on the phone who have worked here for over a decade, "I'm sorry, you are losing your job." I didn't get into the sign of work to do that. None of us do. I know the superintendent does not either. I know the school committee members don't do so either, nor do the Select Board, but it's, I want to clarify that, that all of the departments are having to cut budgets in different ways, but that the town is also cutting personnel. As far as the question, as far, why would you need to eliminate people if you cut the funding? Because all of our budgets run so lean already and having to make the cuts we have had to make, the other areas where perhaps the money floats, like overtime, are gone. And so if you cut those funds, you have to get rid of it. And Dr. Cabral always frames this a really effective way. I mean, we're basically human service departments. Our budgets are overwhelmingly the cost of salaries for people because people are the ones who deliver the services. And unfortunately, after years and years and years and years of tight budgets and tough budget cycles, we've had to basically cut on the margins over and over, rearrange pieces where we can, cut healthcare costs, cut wage growth, all these things. And you eventually reach a point when all that there is left to cut into is the bone and that is where we're at and that's why it hurts. And I agree with you, it's terrible and I wish it wasn't that way, but that is, that is the case.
Charles Milo would like to make a motion to move the question.
So that, I'm sorry, Mr. Milo, you just moved the question, is that correct? And did I hear a second? Okay, so all of those in favor of moving the question and voting on this article, I need a show of hands. Please raise your card in your right hand. This is, again, this is a two-thirds majority vote. Okay, you can put your cards down. All of those opposed to moving the question at this point, please raise your card. Okay, and the moving of the question prevails. So by a two-thirds majority vote. So now we are left with the balance or the rest, I should say, the rest of Article VII, which are the three lines and that's what we're gonna vote on now, whether or not you all approve those line items the way that they're written in the warrant. We have the police line, Health and Community Services line, School Department line, all right? All of those in favor of those budget lines, please, yes, sir? I'm sorry, I can't hear. You have to stand up and... Was the question resolved? Okay, so all of those in favor of the budget as it reads, those three line items, please raise your orange card in your right hand. And you can put them down. All of those opposed, please raise your orange card in your right hand. And the rest of the budget passes by a two-thirds majority.
Charles Milo again, I'd like to make a motion not to reconsider Article VII.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm, I'm having a hard time, Mr. Milo.
I'd like to make a motion not to reconsider Article VII.
No.
Not to reconsider.
He means, he means a motion to reconsider.
It's a motion to reconsider.
He's, he's doing a motion to reconsider.
A motion not to reconsider.
No, that's not...
Yeah, he's...
He wants to, right, right.
Exactly.
So just so I have it straight, it was, I believe it was a motion to reconsider.
Yes, yes.
I'm making a motion to not, N-O-P, not reconsider.
I understand, I understand that, but there is no such thing. So I understand that, that that's what you're getting to, that's the bottom line. But what, the way to get there, you have to do a motion to reconsider. So is that what you're asking for?
Yes, yes. It's a motion to reconsider in the hopes that it fails.
Okay, so I understand what everybody is saying. But in order to get to making sure, if that's what you're trying to get to, that the budget stays the way that it is that you just voted on, it's a motion to reconsider that has to be seconded, that has to then be voted on. Understand? Thank you. Any seconds? Okay, so all those in... Yes, I'm gonna clarify. Okay, so, um... So a yes vote on a motion to reconsider means that you want to reconsider what we just voted on. A no vote on a motion to reconsider means that it's over. And that part, those three line items that we just voted on will stay the way that they're, that they are. Everybody understand? Okay, so... All right, so all of those in favor of the motion to reconsider, it's a majority vote, by the way, a simple majority vote. All those in favor which will reconsider what we just voted on, please raise your hand. All of those opposed to the motion to reconsider, please raise your hand and there's a majority so that budget stays. Motion to reconsider tonight. Okay. Now, we'll move on to Article VIII. Select Board Member King.
Article VIII, FY-2021 Capital Budget. I've learned to read a lot faster since I was up here last. Motion: I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $2,548,534 for the purpose of meeting the capital budget needs of the town for fiscal year 2021 as listed in the warrant under Article VIII and that to meet this appropriation, $33,903 shall be transferred from available FEMA funds, $104,631 shall be transferred from the capital stabilization fund, $110,000 shall be transferred from water surplus and that the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow $2,300,000 for the ambulance, water treatment plant design and engineering, and water main project under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, or any other enabling authority, provided that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bond or notes may be applied to pay project costs and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied and to authorize the Select Board to do or take all actions necessary to carry out these projects on behalf of or in the name of the town. By way of explanation, this is the annual capital budget for the town and has been limited to health and safety items and enterprise projects which are funded separately from taxation the Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article VIII? Okay, all of those in favor of Article VIII, please raise your card. This is a two-thirds majority. And you can put them down. All those opposed to Article VIII passing, please raise your card. And Article VIII passes by a two-thirds majority. Article IX.
Good evening. I move to accept Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clauses 20, Section G, and Clause 20, Second H, and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 60, Section 3F as printed in the warrant. By way of explanation, accepting these statutes will provide additional relief to veterans and their families through property tax exemptions, involuntary donations made when paying municipal property tax or motor vehicle excise bills. Select Board recommend.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Number Nine? Okay, seeing none, we move to a vote. So all of those in favor of Article Nine passing, this is a simple majority, please raise your card in your right hand. And you can put them down. All those opposed, please raise your card. And Article Nine passes. By a majority. Okay, prior to getting, this is the last article, so I'm just gonna, I just want to say one thing prior to getting to this article. After this article's over, presumably if the motion is adjourned, if there's a motion to adjourn and the town meeting is adjourned, I want you all to know that these doors over here to my right, to your left, will be open for your convenience, for you to leave, instead of having to crowd out and leave that way. All these doors will be opened over here, okay? Okay, Article X.
I move that the town vote to appropriate a reserve from Community Preservation Fund and fund annual revenues. The amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for administrative expenses, community preservation projects, the payment of debt service and other expenses in fiscal year 2021, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation, all as printed in the warrant. By way of explanation, this article proposes the fiscal year 2021 budget for the Community Preservation Committee, which includes funding of the Affordable Housing Trust activities for fiscal year 2021. The trust works to implement the goals and strategies of Easton's state mandated housing production plan and to provide resources and affordable housing options to low and moderate income residents. Fiscal year 2021 activities will include funding of the Home Buyer Assistance Program, support for creation of group housing for required brain injury individuals on Foundry Street, support for a nonprofit developer to create affordable family housing on Electric Avenue, Aquanicut Ave, and Morse Road, and support for planning work and related administration for the town to meet its Chapter 40B requirements. At least $250,000 of this amount will fund a short-term emergency rental assistance grant program for low-income households in Easton in response to the COVID-19-induced recession and associated economic hardship. Amounts to be funded shall be considered separate appropriations. Select Board recommend.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article X? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All of those in favor of Article X passing, please raise your card. This again is a simple majority vote. Thank you. And all of those opposed, please raise your card. And Article X passes by a simple majority. I heard a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor. All right, very good. Thank you.